Good afternoon and welcome to the June regular meeting of the Calgary Police Commission. I call this meeting to order and ask that everyone ensure your microphones are muted until you need to speak. My name is Amtul Siddiqui and I'm Chair of the Commission. I'm joined today by Commissioners Kelly Ogil, Sean Cornet, Susan Mallon, Cherie Nice and Jordan, Sam Hope, Ayo Adidiran, Erin Noga, Marcia Hanson, Robert Tengey, and Councilors Jennifer Wyness and Terry Wong. Today's Calgary Police Service representatives are led by Chief Katie McCollan. On her behalf, Inspector Jessica, could you please introduce those you expect to speak during today's meeting?
Good afternoon Chair and thank you for that. All interest the room here as mentioned, we have Chief Katie McCollan standing in for Deputy Chief Asef Rashid, Acting Deputy Jeff Bell, Deputy Chief Cliff O'Brien, Deputy Chief Corey Daly, Chief Strategy Officer Catherine Murphy, Chief People Officer Kim Armstrong, Senior Financial Officer Sabina Lokank, Director Michael Nun, Superintendent Clara Smart, Executive Director Susan Cron, Acting Inspector Del Vella, Marshall Gibson, Amory Hamilton Henry, Jody Jimenez, Kim Asale, Shayle Danzik, Carrie Rack, and Donna Vingy.
Thank you everyone for being here. For those not familiar with our role, our commission is a body of ten community members and two city councillors appointed by City Council and the Government of Alberta. We provide independent citizen governance and oversight of the Calgary Police Service on behalf of all Calgarians. To protect the political neutrality of the police, Alberta's Police Act requires that the police chief report directly to us instead of elected officials. We provide direction to the police through the chief, police policies, monitoring the police complaint process, and approval of how the police budget is spent. Today is one of eight regular meetings we have each year to openly discuss police governance and oversight matters with the service's leadership and to hear from the public. We also have several private monthly committee meetings where Commissioners work more directly with the service on various matters that cannot be discussed publicly. I would like to start by acknowledging that June is National Indigenous Heritage History Month in Canada. It's a time dedicated to recognizing and celebrating the history, heritage, resilience, and diversity of First Nations, Inuit, and Métis people. In the spirit of reconciliation that months like this encourage, I would like to also acknowledge that our commission is meeting today on the ancestral and traditional territory of the Blackfoot Confederacy made up of the Sisicca, Gai'ni, and Begoni First Nations. It's also home to the Satina First Nation and the Ahe, Nakota people of the Bear Spa, Chinooki, and the Good Stony First Nations. These are the people who made a treaty with the Crown forming Treaty VII Territory. Calgary is also home to the Oteh Pimwask Métis government of the Métis Nation within Alberta. Our commission is dedicated to doing our part to support reconciliation with all Indigenous people, condemns racism and prejudice in all forms, and is committed to being anti-racist. As we start our meeting, allow me to provide a brief overview of the format for those joining us for the first time. The public session of this meeting is being livestreamed, and a recording will be posted online so we can make it available to those unable to attend. There will be several presentations from the Calgary Police Service, Commission members, and Commission staff. Commissioners will also have the chance to ask questions or make comments after each one. Once we have completed the presentations, we will move to the public participation portion of the meeting. Those who are registered to speak will then be called on by name and will have a chance to either ask a question or make a presentation for our consideration. Following the public participation, we will close the public meeting with the chief and I taking questions from the media. Everyone is welcome to observe the media availability, but only media professionals can participate. To start our meeting, I will ask for the agenda to be approved. Does any member of the commission wish to request an amendment to the agenda? Hearing no requests, can I please get a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Commissioner Nice and Jordan and Commissioner Cornet. All in favor? Moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. I will now call for declarations of pecuniary interest or conflict of interest from the Commissioners. Hearing no declarations, I will now ask for approval of the consent agenda. For those viewing today's meeting, the consent agenda is a list of routine items and reports that all Commissioners agree can be accepted without more discussion or a separate vote. Does any member of the commission wish to request an item on the consent agenda be brought forward for discussion? Hearing none, I declare the consent agenda approved. To open my chair's report, I would like to take a moment to send our best wishes to those marking religious holidays for this month. June brings an array of religious celebrations, including martyrdom of the Guru Arjun observed by Sikhs and Idar Ahlada and Marharam, the Islamic New Year, being observed by Muslims. To all celebrating, we offer our best wishes. Earlier in the meeting, I mentioned June being National Indigenous History Month, and I'd also like to acknowledge June being Pride Month, Immigrant Heritage Month, and Children's Awareness Month. I want to express the commission's gratitude and appreciation for the pivotal role the Calgary Police Service and key partners played in the success of the 2025 G7 Summit. Every member, whether directly involved or from supporting from behind the scenes, contributed to the proud and memorable achievement for our entire city. Under Chief Katie McCollan's leadership, the team demonstrated exceptional professionalism, resilience, and courage on the world stage. We are immensely proud. And it looks like our presence on the world stage won't be coming to an end right away. From G7 to the International Rotary Convention, to the greatest outdoor show on earth, members of the service will continue to be busy over the next few months. This past month and as a part of our Police Insight Days, Commissioner members took a tour of the Luna Child Advocacy Centre. Luna Child and Youth Advocacy Centre stands as a shining example of collaborative excellence in Calgary, uniting professionals from law enforcement, healthcare, child protection, and justice under one roof to support children and families impacted by abuse. During this tour, we gained a deeper understanding of innovative policing strategies, community engagement, and how CPS and our partners are collaborating to advance our shared goals of protecting vulnerable populations. Other events that the commission attended included the recruit graduation of Class 260, and this coming weekend we'll be attending a traditional powwow at Heritage Park where we'll witness reconciliation and community connection with Indigenous peoples. Several of us also had the honour of visiting District Seven where we had the opportunity to engage directly with frontline officers and gain first-hand insight into district-level operations. Thank you to the organizers of these events for including us. Now, I would be remiss today if, as part of my chair's report, I didn't highlight a few ways members of the Calgary Police Service have been delivering on the priorities of Calgarians. In terms of enhancing member wellness and leadership, Calgary Police Service expanded access to mental health resources, offering thirty-four trauma-informed education sessions that reached over eight hundred families, eight hundred members and their families. Programs like the Working Mind and Suicide Intervention help reduce stigma and build resilience. The service expanded youth diversion programs, helping more young people avoid the justice system and access support early. Through the Community Safety Investment Framework, they funded initiatives like Help, PACT, and the Indigenous Navigator, connecting vulnerable individuals with critical services. Charges were laid following a 3D-printed gun seizure this past month. Officer presence has increased downtown with a fifty percent reduction in shootings being reported, and over eighty-nine crime guns were seized, contributing to safer communities. These efforts reflect CPS's commitment to continuing to build safe and responsive policing. Thank you to all members of the Calgary Police Service for the work you do to keep Calgarians safe. With that, I will close my chair's report. Can I please get a motion to accept the report for information? Commissioner Mallon and Commissioner Ogil, moved and seconded, all those in favor? Thank you, moved and seconded to receive this report. We'll now move on to the presentations from the Calgary Police Service, starting with a presentation on the Calgary Police Youth Foundation. Chief, would you like to open with a few remarks first?
Thanks very much Chair, I do appreciate that. Thank you for your very kind words and ongoing support and to all the Commissioners' strong governance and oversight. So before I do turn it over to Deputy Daly for the first presentation, I want to address an incident and video that circulated in the media and online earlier this week, which depicts one of our officers assaulting an individual in their care. Our officer pleaded guilty to the assault and has been sentenced by a judge. I recognize how distressing this incident has been for so many. Every member of this service has a duty to uphold public safety and to protect those in their custody. As police officers, we are held to a higher standard, and it is my responsibility to ensure that our members meet that standard at all times. I'm deeply committed to that responsibility and to being as transparent as I can be when we do not live up to our standards of behaviour. This officer involved has personally apologized to the individual affected. I too want to extend my sincere apology. To Mr. Big Child, your family, and to the greater community, we do not condone what happened, and I am deeply sorry that this incident occurred. It's been a busy week and demanding period since we last met, and I want to begin by acknowledging the exceptional efforts of our members during this time. As the Chair mentioned, G7, our team played a critical role in supporting that event. This was a significant undertaking that required not only extensive planning and coordination, but also the commitment of our members working throughout the event. Thanks to the professionalism and the strong collaboration with our partners, the event was a success. Immediately after G7, our members were straight into another big event that attracted over fifteen thousand visitors from around the globe. The 2025 Rotary International Convention. With the world's eyes on Calgary for both events, we provided a safe and secure environment that we hope will encourage future visitors and investment in our city. And in just a few short days, as the Chair alluded to, we will start to welcome more visitors from around the world for the Calgary Stampede. I am confident our members will again shine as they create a safe and secure environment for all. And while all these events are being policed, our members continue to respond to the full spectrum of public safety needs across our city. One recent example involved a swift response to a random assault near Centre Street North and Seventy-Eighth Avenue Northeast where three individuals, including two transit drivers, were attacked. Our officers acted quickly and a suspect was taken into custody before further harm could occur. We are also seeing some brazen and non-compliant behaviour from suspects putting the public and officers at risk. Over the weekend, officers responded to a high-risk incident during a proactive operation. A suspect vehicle failed to stop, reaching speeds of over one hundred and seventy kilometres per hour outside the city and continuing into urban areas. Despite deploying two tire deflation devices, that vehicle continued, at times driving on bare rims and running red lights. The vehicle ended up in a field where officers boxed it in. All three occupants fled on foot, two were apprehended immediately, and the third attempted to hijack a passing vehicle, unaware that that vehicle was being driven by a CPS member. After a short foot chase, he too was arrested. Of note, these individuals were just twelve, fifteen, and sixteen years old. Also of note is the fact that three officers were injured during this incident. Two of them required hospital treatment. Thankfully, their injuries were not serious. However, this highlights dangers the public and our officers face during these dynamic and unpredictable calls where suspects may go to extreme lengths to evade arrest. These injuries also add to the strain on our staffing as members recover and are temporarily off-duty. Teams are already stretched thin, so just one member being off to recover can have a significant impact. Just last week, another officer and a member of the public narrowly avoided serious injury. The officer was assisting someone who had broken down on the side of the road. They had their emergency lights activated when another vehicle struck the rear of the cruiser. This is the second incident in just recent months. Thankfully, no one was injured, but the outcome could have been far worse. In addition to the risk of injury, these two incidents also resulted in damage to several police vehicles, vehicles we rely upon to serve the community. This places further pressure on our already-stretched fleet. You may have seen recent media and social media coverage highlighting a troubling trend: youths using air guns to intimidate, threaten, or harm others. This is extremely dangerous for several reasons. These air guns are often designed to look nearly identical to real firearms, which means our officers must treat every call involving them as if they are real weapons. This not only escalates the risk for everyone involved, including the youths themselves, but also places a significant strain on emergency response resources. Our community in Calgary is phenomenal, but I want to make three quick appeals tonight for the well-being of everyone. One, please do not use or brandish air guns in public. If you're a parent, please talk to your children about the inherent dangers of doing so. Secondly, please comply with officers during traffic stops or other calls. And number three, please slow down and move over when you see emergency vehicles stop on the road. This is not just a legal requirement, it's a matter of life and death. Our officers are out there protecting this community, and I need your help to keep them safe. A moment of caution behind the wheel can prevent a lifetime of consequences. Thanks very much for allowing me to give those couple of opening remarks. I'll now hand it to Deputy Daly for our first presentation.
Thank you, I'm just gonna check in EDO that Susan Cron is online with the access.
She apparently is, we're just trying to locate her screen name so that we can give her the permission to speak. So if you want to start your introduction, hopefully we'll have found her by then.
Absolutely, thank you Chair, Commission. Thanks for having us again tonight. So Susan Cron is our Executive Director of the Calgary Police Youth Foundation and supports the Calgary Police directly through the foundation in providing financial supports and services to run many programs that we have that she'll go over tonight, some such as Mast in the Yard, Power Play, Bridges to Brighter Futures, Youth Link, etc. So Susan's prepared a short presentation and here with Superintendent Smart, who CPF program falls under the Partnerships Division, is also online for us here tonight as well. So hopefully, we're good to go with Executive Director Cron.
Just give me five minutes Chair.
Chair, if it pleases the Commission here, I know you brought up recognition of Indigenous Month while we're waiting for the technical difficulties to be figured out. I'd like to cover some highlights. I know I'm not on the agenda to speak tonight. But just for everybody's awareness, a couple of historical points and then some actual action items from this month from the Calgary Police Service and engagement through IRT with the community. And so in nineteen seventy-nine CPS established the Race Relations Unit that was established to work with, through the Diversity Resource Team in improving communication with our diverse communities in Calgary. In twenty twenty-three, the Indigenous Relations Team was formed. The team is comprised of a sergeant. The IRT has established incredibly strong connections with our Indigenous community. These include personal relationships with elders, knowledge keepers, and community members, as well as partnerships with Indigenous organizations. I just wanted to cover a couple of quick highlights here, specific to Aboriginal Awareness Month, which we are honoured to be invited to and participate in. In Aboriginal Awareness Week, the fourteenth through the twenty-first, the members of the Indigenous Relations Team, as well as some of the CPS leadership team from the Partnerships Division, and myself, CPS Honour Guard, along with Mayor Gondak and some CFD executive, participated by invite with the Indigenous elders and knowledge keepers in cultural ceremonies in the powwow. The same activities in and around Heritage Park powwow on June twenty-first and National Indigenous Peoples' Day with Superintendent Smart, Sergeant Klein, and his team participating in several hours of the cultural events throughout the day. The IRT team specifically also attended events on Satina honoring Elder Bruce Starlight during a Canada Post celebration where Elder Starlight, as a knowledge keeper who's spent more than five decades advocating to save his language and culture from extinction, is going to be on a stamp, one of three Indigenous stamps of Indigenous leaders that were issued in June, and then successively participated in soccer power play with Satina, collaborating with the Youth Foundation and youth to play soccer and hockey with children. Green Leaf CPS Cadet camps and presentations through the Calgary Police Cadet Corps, engaging with our Indigenous youth, and then CPS Student Police Academy as well, hosted by the SROs and the work with officer coaches and the youth police verbal communications. They go through conflict resolution and scenario-based activities where IRT presented on cultural awareness there as well in honour of the month. But now I see Susan's online, so I'll turn it over there.
Okay, good afternoon. Can everyone, I'll just do a quick sound check because we're a bit of excitement getting me online. Can everyone see and hear me okay?
I can hear you. I'm not sure if you can turn your volume up just a tad bit more.
Okay, let me. I'm at full volume. I can sign use my teacher voice.
That would be great. We can hear you now with the teacher voice. Thank you.
Okay, well, good afternoon. Thank you Chair Siddiqui and Commissioners for inviting me to come and speak today about the Calgary Police Youth Foundation. And for those of you I still have to meet, my name is Susan Cron and I am the Executive Director for the Calgary Police Youth Foundation, and I have been with the organization since twenty nineteen. Next slide please. Am I advancing the slides or is somebody helping me with that? Oh, we got it. And so this slide, if ever you're interested to go look at our bylaws, this is the language that you would see quite simply with our registered charity. Our legal name is the Calgary Police Foundation. We do business as the Calgary Police Youth Foundation. Our mandate is a very simple one. We want to keep children and youth safe from crime and victimization. In Canada, the CRA recognizes four broad categories of charity purposes, and our work at the Calgary Police Foundation mostly falls into advancement of education as it pertains to crime prevention, early intervention, and education, relief of poverty, and then other purposes that benefit the community at large. We're a small team. Right now, we have a team of eight, and we operate out of the Calgary Police Service headquarters here at West Wind. Next slide please. This timeline shows you our history. We actually celebrated our charity birthday on June the seventh when we turned fourteen years old. Our beginnings, believe it or not, actually stemmed from this very room. And so the Chair of the Calgary Police Commission in position in twenty eleven, as well as the Chief of the Calgary Police Service, had a vision to stop child and youth crime before that happened. And that vision is what led to the Calgary Police Foundation. So in those early years, our child and youth priorities were predominantly in response to what was happening in that environment and is identified by CPS as a priority. Over the last seven or eight years, our funding has more or less stabilized to support the core child and youth programs that are managed by the Youth Services Section here at the Calgary Police Service, as well as those child and youth Safe for Life programming that's operated out of Youth Link Calgary. Since forming, Bernamina said, with just turned fourteen, we've raised over twenty-two million dollars. In twenty twenty-two, we were successful in obtaining a grant from the government for sixteen and a half million dollars, and the purpose of that grant was to expand one of our programs, and we have eleven, the Integrated School Support Program and take it provincial. Every September, the Calgary Police Youth Foundation Board of Directors and the Calgary Police Service Program Staff, we meet and we talk about child and youth priorities, what's happening, and you know, what challenges our young people are facing, how we might be able to respond and help. And then that very important conversation actually informs the budget priorities as well as the plan, business planning priorities for the upcoming year. Next slide please. Next slide. So I show this slide often whenever I talk about the foundation because I think it's important for whoever is learning for the first time about the Calgary Police Youth Foundation that they understand the decision-makers that sit at our board table. So hopefully, you recognize a few names on that list. And our Board of Directors do allow for up to twenty members, and currently we have fourteen. We just accepted a resignation last year, last week, sorry, and so right now we're down at fourteen. Two key people on our board include the Chief Superintendent of CBE, as well as the Chief Superintendent of Calgary Catholic. Having both the highest level of leadership at our board table really does help those conversations about what's happening with school-aged children right now and where those opportunities for collaboration and proactively support children and youth in their school environment and beyond that in their communities. The other thing about having a great board that's got, you know, some very well-known reputable names there, it does provide confidence to our supporters and all of our supporters, predominantly from the community, that the right people are at the table and making decisions on the most impactful use of the donor dollars. Next slide. So I haven't got time to speak to all of the program areas. However, we've just last week signed off on our annual report for twenty twenty-four, and I will also send via Corwin our program brochure so that you can start to do a bit of a deeper dive into each of the programs. What I'll talk about is what's common to all of the programs and so you understand the purpose and the goals that we have with them. So each of the programs, and there's two slides, it's just gonna list the program names. They vary widely in scope, in purpose, and in the ages of the youth that we serve. So from elementary aged children, so beginning age five, all the way up to age eighteen and those are older teen years, those high-risk teens. But all of the programs have one common purpose, every single one of them. It doesn't matter, you know, what the main objective is. The one common purpose all of the programs have is that they seek to build positive relationships between young people and the police through meaningful connection. Program delivery, so the Calgary Police Youth Foundation, we provide governance, oversight, leadership, funding, but we don't actually deliver all of the programs. We deliver a few. Most of the core child and youth programs are delivered by who we consider our program partners, and that is the Calgary Police Service and also Youth Link Calgary. Programs that we manage, more are for practical support, and that would include our Bridges to Brighter Futures and Bridging Bites. And currently, we manage the Provincial Integrated School Support Program. Next slide please. Just more of our programs. So I mentioned Bridges to Brighter Futures, and what this allows us to do is across the service and across Calgary is when you see things like a bike safety day or a basketball tournament, and you see the Calgary Police Service and the Calgary Police Youth Foundation, in all probability, that is one of our Bridges to Brighter Future initiatives. And so that allows us, it's a fund that allows us to work alongside CPS, be out in the community, and just having fun with some children and youth, helping them understand that a police officer is a person of safety and someone they can go to if they need help. And but we also address some needs that we become aware of through our engagement with leaders like, as I said, the Chief Superintendents. So for example, last year through Bridges, we distributed thirty-two hundred backpacks to Indigenous and marginalized students and over two thousand holiday hampers. And we do that with community support and volunteers, as I said, with a team of eight. And so we need a lot of help to do that type of work. This year, we'll be collaborating with both Education Matters and Catholic, and we're aiming to get out probably over five thousand backpacks. And so big job ahead of us in August. I'll speak briefly about evaluation. And so it's very important when you have a program that supports children and youth and also that there's funding attached to it, that we really understand if we're making a difference. and also that there's funding attached to it, that we really understand if we're making a difference. We want to understand the outcome. Did the program meet all of the goals that we we aspire to achieve? Did we make a difference in that young person's life? So for Mass, Yard, Redirect and ISSP, we have very concrete evaluation attached to that. And it's, it's, it tells us lots about the output, not just the output of the program, but the outcome, and I you what happened for that young person that might have been different. For the other programs where we don't have organized evaluation attached to it, it doesn't mean we don't understand the outcomes. It simply means that we learn about it a different way. So you know, for the Cadet Core Program, for example, there's an annual survey. And so we we understand how the cadets are experiencing that program, how the families of the cadets feel about that program, et cetera. And with that type of information, meaningful insights that we get from the youth, we actually can still continue to develop and enhance the programming based on, you know, real lived experience. When you put all of the programs together, and we probably reach over 30,000 children and youth every year. Next slide. So this is a true number, it should accommodate our budget this year. So when you look at the Calgary Police Youth Foundation approved budget, and the amount of money we've allocated to programs is the number you see on the screen, $2,176,600. When we allocate that money, we actually don't have it waiting there just to hand over. We actually have to go and fundraise that money in the community. And so, so we start, we're, we're active all year round in fundraising, so that we can honor those commitments. As I said earlier, at the fall, we meet with CPS, we meet with Youth Link, we have a conversation about what's upcoming, and any sort of program growth, any budget adjustments we might want to make. And then in December, the Calgary Police Youth Foundation Board of Directors will approve their budget. In addition to what funding we provide through the Youth Services Section at Calgary Police Service, we obviously provide funding for Safe for Life at Youth Link Calgary, as well as their Dodger Centre for Cyber Safety, and also the provincial program, we provide funding there. And just to give you a sense of the numbers, Youth Link Calgary this year for a number of their projects were allocated 975,000. So because we receive gift and kind from the Calgary Police Service, thank you. And our admin and overhead costs are reasonably low compared to what other charities might have to use their donor dollars for. And I said earlier, I work from the Calgary Police Service Headquarters, so we're not using a building in the community, causing us then, et cetera. And so that means that our admin costs are reasonably low. And and most of the dollars that we raise, we're able to channel back into child and youth kinds of intervention education and intervention programming. So my final comment, because I know that you've got lots of presentations to see this afternoon, this year we planned to raise over almost $2.5 million. And we're probably not quite halfway there yet, but we're getting there. And and I'll leave it at that and happy to take any questions, comments that you might have.
Thank you very much, Edie Cron, and thank you Deputy Chief Daly for opening with your opening remarks. I will say before I go to questions that the work that your foundation and Youth Link do are incredible and very valuable. So go to questions from the Commissioners. Commissioner Cornet.
It's more of a comment than a question. One of the programs that, there's many of these programs are very structured and so, and very targeted. There is also one of the pieces where each district is granted $5,000 a year, where they can choose in their district what it is they want to do to connect with the youth. And that's one of the ones that really impacts and is sort of very flexible and adaptable for whatever is going on in the district. So sometimes it's winter, sometimes it's bicycles, sometimes, you know, it's baseball, whatever. So I think that's another thing that actually helps with the districts as well in terms of them feeling engaged with their communities. So and the one other piece I want to put is there are police foundations across the country and elsewhere. They are often a little bit more focused on providing money for equipment and things like that. This is, and I don't know if it's still the case, it was one of the very first that was totally focused on youth and prevention. And that shift in terms of where it was, it was aiming its efforts was quite unique to Calgary. So I just wanted to add those two comments. So thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Cornet. Any other questions or comments? Edie Cron, I'll just ask you a question. As a fundraiser, I know that it's very hard right now. You know, there's a lot of competing priorities in the city. Do you find that you're having any trouble in terms of your fundraising? Do you find that it's declining or it's steadily going up? And if it is declining, have you had to cut any programs?
Well, no, there's, there's no prospect of cutting a program. And potentially we might have to scale back. Commissioner Cornet spoke to our Bridges to Brighter Futures, which is where we do the Exos Calgary Community Initiatives, things like backpacks and hampers. So if we have to reduce costs, it will be in those sort of program areas. We'll, we'll scale back that that level of community engagement. Our biggest challenge, yes, fundraising is always going to be a challenge. The Calgary Police Youth Foundation seems to resonate best with family foundations. And so, you know, people who invest in the community in Calgary and care about, you know, the Calgary City and children and youth. Where we probably are seeing a steady decline is in the corporate sector. And so initially, you know, we could see that downtown Calgary was a resource area for this, that that's not the case per se. And it's not, not because we're not important, it's more about a change in scope and direction for, for some of our corporate supporters.
Great. Thank you very much for that explanation. I'm not seeing any other questions or comments, so thank you again for your time today. We appreciate everything that you're doing in the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much for having me.
We'll now move on to the next presentation on our agenda, which is from the annual report on both compliments and complaints about officer conduct and how the Services Professional Standards Section is addressing them. Please go ahead with your presentation.
Good afternoon, everyone. Just wait for the presentation to pull up if we could. My name's Catherine Murphy. I'm the Chief Strategy Officer and General Counsel. And professional standards falls within the Bureau of Organizational Performance, which I lead. So I'm pleased to give the presentation on behalf of the organization today. Okay, so the mandate of the Professional Standards Section is to investigate and resolve public and internal concerns and complaints about the conduct of police officers, the policies of the Calgary Police Service, or the service provided by the Calgary Police Service as a whole in accordance with the process under the Police Act. We also take in numerous compliments from Calgarians for police officers every year. As you can see from the organization chart, Professional Standards is led by an Executive Director, which is a civilian member of the service. And the rest of the section is almost a perfect 50% hybrid between civilian and sworn staff. We have civilians placed throughout Professional Standards and investigative roles, administrative staff and investigative strategist functions. So we really work in partnership with our sworn members to oversee and investigate complaints. So in 2024, the Calgary Police Service responded to more than half a million calls for service. These interactions with Calgarians generated just over 1,100 contacts with members of the public who brought forward concerns. 272 of those were formal complaints, which means they're formal allegations of misconduct that are put in writing to the Professional Standards Section. So that means that about 0.05% of all calls for service give rise to formal complaint. That's a 6% decline over the five-year average. However, when you take into account population growth in Calgary, it's actually about a 13% decline on a per capita basis. So we're seeing a good, strong trend of declining complaints against police officers. In 2024, we took several steps in Professional Standards to make the process more accessible for Calgarians, more efficient, and to improve the quality of our investigations. And in particularly, we focused on our investigations into allegations of biased or unfair policing. We don't get a lot of these a year, but we felt it was important to take some deliberate efforts to improve how we investigate these complaints. A couple of the ways we've done this are on this slide. We've created a standard investigative process and questions, so that our investigators are trained and are consistently looking for similar evidence and asking similar questions in all complaints that allege unfair treatment, including using the advice of our internal racial equity subject matter experts. We have introduced optional self-disclosure of race and gender data through our public portal. So this is not mandatory, but if complainants are willing to self-disclose, it helps us analyze who our complainants are and helps us look at systemic issues in our process. We've translated our public portal into 10 additional languages to improve accessibility and allow people to understand the portal and file their complaints in different languages. And we have invested significant effort in training our staff on best practices to investigate allegations of harassment, bias, or unfair policing. We've introduced elements of inclusivity, cultural competency, and racial equity into our investigator training program. And we've also collaborated with other internal specialty units to establish direct engagement opportunities between Professional Standards and our advisory boards. We've also been focusing internally to improve the process for our membership. We did a journey mapping initiative in 2022 where we obtained honest and open feedback from our membership on their experience in the Professional Standards process. Since then, we've seen significant improvements in both efficiency and quality of investigations. So currently about 78% of our files are closed under 12 months. That's about an 8% improvement over last year and about a 25% improvement over the year before. And if you go back a year before that, it's almost a 100% improvement in our timelines. Body worn camera continues to be an invaluable investigative method when it comes to police conduct complaints. 63% of complaints now have available body worn camera. And it takes approximately four months to resolve a file with body worn camera compared to about six without. And simply that's because of the quality of the evidence and how quickly we can see what happened. We've been implementing several organizational improvements, including a civilian-based workplace investigations team, which specializes particularly in investigating complaints in the workplace. And we've launched a supervisor dashboard, which allows increased transparency for supervisors, so that we can promote member wellness and earlier intervention. So hopefully we catch trends and behaviors before they manifest into a concern with Professional Standards. So this slide has just the basic numbers of external and internal complaints and the common themes amongst those complaints. Internal complaints are when the chief initiates a complaint based on conduct that she may be concerned about. External complaints are those that originate from members of the public. For each public contact that we receive, we capture the overall substance of the concern across a number of different categories. Those categories remain fairly consistent year over year. And again, the two top themes we see in complaints are rude or unprofessional behavior and a lack of service, which basically means a Calgarian is not satisfied with the quality of service they received or the investigation that they received. In terms of outcomes, again, we remain fairly consistent year over year in Professional Standards. About 22% of misconduct allegations against officers that did not go to a disciplinary hearing are sustained, and that's fairly consistent year over year. We closed just over 150 complaints by formal investigation last year, which is down 17%. And that's partially because our rate of alternative dispute resolution is up this year. So it's gone up to about 57% of files are resolved through ADR. Last year was about 51%. If the conduct meets the threshold of a Police Act to be deemed of a serious nature, so serious complaints, that's when a complaint is ordered to a disciplinary hearing. This slide contains the most common penalties for sustained complaints. So for non-serious matters, those are the matters that are dealt with by the chief directly. An official warning was the most common penalty at about 50%. Of the allegations that were sustained at a hearing, a disciplinary hearing, the most common penalty was a forfeiture of time. And that we, that means we remove overtime hours from an officer's payback. It should be noted as well that some complaints will have more than one penalty. This chart is based on allegations. So if there's four different allegations in a complaint, there could be more than one type of penalty depending on the outcome of that investigation. So looking forward, we're about to experience a massive change in this province in police oversight. The Government of Alberta is standing up the Police Review Commission, which we are still anticipating will begin in December of this year. It was established by legislative change in 2022, although it is not yet in force, and that's what we expect to happen later this year. We are working very closely with the Government of Alberta's implementation team to ensure that this process goes seamlessly. We're very supportive of the PRC and the initiative to launch it. We believe in the necessity of independent oversight and civilian oversight of police. And we've been supporting that as much as possible internally with civilianization of Professional Standards and with some of the process improvements. But this process with the PRC will bring Alberta more closely in line with most other provinces' approach to complaints investigation. ASERT, or the Alberta Serious Incident Response Team, will also be part of the Police Review Commission. I can't forget compliments. And last but certainly not least, I want to close by appreciating the excellent work that our members do every day. We receive compliments from as many compliments as we receive complaints. We received 262 last year, and our officers really appreciate these. They're very heartfelt, they're written with great appreciation from Calgarians, and they're about the kindness and the empathy and our officers going above and beyond every day in the work that they do for Calgarians. I've started a tradition as I give this presentation of picking just one compliment and reading it as part of this presentation. So I'm going to do that now before I close. This compliment was actually sent by our partners in the Transit Public Safety Team at the City of Calgary. And they wrote, "I would like to reach out to highlight some of the outstanding work your officers have done in relation to a call that transit peace officers responded to at the LRT station." Constable Kaylee Petullo was the first officer on scene and engaged with the subject. She was patient, understanding, and empathetic towards the subject by asking open-ended questions in a nonjudgmental manner. She was very professional throughout the interaction and provided the subject with multiple solutions, offering assistance without hesitation. She even offered $5 of her own money to assist the subject with buying additional clothes and dropping her off at a store of her choice. The subject was also offered to be transported to a shelter, hospital, or health center. Despite the subject declining all assistance, Constable Petullo did a fantastic job from her communication, active listening, and problem solving. An additional unit was also on the scene and returned the subject's belongings from the encampment they were staying at. You should be proud of the work all of these officers are doing. I was very impressed that early morning, and thank you for the quick response time. Please pass this along to the officers. Job very well done by all. So on behalf of the CPS, I want to thank the Calgarians that took the time to show their appreciation to our officers. It makes a big difference in people's day, and it really helps us remember why we do what we do. So with that, I will take questions.
Thank you, Chief Strategy Officer Murphy. Questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Nice and Jordan.
Thanks, CSO Murphy. Having been here now for a few years, I've seen this particular report get better and better. And I think that is reflective of the attention that actually CPS is paying in this particular area. So I do want to express my thanks for that. I, I'm a little astounded at, given the situation in the world these days. I, I'm a little astounded at, given the situation in the world these days, why our complaints are not going up. So can you speculate a little bit about why that might be occurring? You know, the first thing that comes to my mind is we still don't have it right in terms of how to make it easy for people to report. I'd like to think that our officers are, you know, exceptional, and I believe that they are. But I do also believe that society is still very picky about how the interactions go with police service. So just a comment.
Yeah, I think that's a great question, and I don't think necessarily we're attempting to drive complaints down. Because as you said, I think it's part of the accountability process, both complaints and compliments. And we want to make sure that people can file those and have trust in the process to file those. I think some of it maybe comes down to people's just different preferences on how they want to express their objection to conduct. And sometimes people will do that through a formal complaints process, and sometimes they'll do it through a different mechanism, like voicing their opinion on social media or however that may come out. So there's, there's certainly accessibility, and as I mentioned, we're trying to do this through better technology, more languages, better engagement with our community advisory boards. But I think there will always be some folks who are not comfortable using that process and sort of choose other ways to make their views known about the experiences, good or bad, that they may have had with police.
I'm not seeing any other questions or comments. So thank you again. Very well done. Again, it's, we have a tendency to hear complaints more than we hear compliments. So it's always good for us to hear the other side as well and for the community to hear those also. So thank you. The next presentation on CPS twenty twenty is on CPS's 2025 Midyear Annual Policing Plan. Please go ahead with that presentation.
Thanks again, Chair. I'm going to just introduce and turn this one over to two members of my team. Amory Hamilton Henry is the Manager of Strategic Planning and Evaluation. And Jody Domenas is a Business Strategist who has led the creation and reporting on the annual policing plan. So with that, I will turn it over to these ladies.
Thank you, CSO Murphy. Good afternoon, commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to present the mid-year update on the annual policing plan. This report offers a clear overview of our progress to date, outlining key achievements, challenges, and the areas we are prioritizing as we move forward. The mid-year report provides first quarter updates for all measures. And where data is available, progress has been reported up to April 2025. Findings indicate that CPS is steadily advancing towards its annual goals. Of the forty-four performance indicators tracked, twenty-two are on track, twenty-two are progressing, and none at this time are off track. It is important to highlight that at the time of our report, data for annual measures such as the Employee Engagement Survey as well as the Citizen Survey were not available. And until updated data becomes available, these measures will be classified as progressing. At this point, I'll hand over to Jody, the Business Strategist, leading the APP, who will walk us through some key highlights for each of our focus areas.
Good afternoon, everybody. Next slide. Yep. Okay, so as mentioned, the annual policing plan consists of four focus areas, nine outcomes, fifteen goals, and forty-four performance measurements. Next slide. Also was mentioned, twenty-two are on track, twenty-two are progressing, and as of now, none are off track. So just to provide some highlights from our four focus areas, starting with our people. CPS, CPS made significant strides in fostering member wellness and a well-equipped workforce this quarter with key achievements including improved health supports, trauma-informed education, stronger leadership skills, clearer promotion process, modernizing HR systems, ongoing recruitment efforts, and keeping members engaged. Next slide. Within our diversity, CPS continues to strengthen its diversity inclusion efforts through key initiatives focused on cultural education, community engagement, and organizational alignment, including improving organizational structures, inclusive hiring practices, shaping future inclusive efforts, and growing employee support groups. Next slide. Within our communities, CPS continues to enhance community safety through key initiatives focused on proactive policing partnerships and outreach, including increasing officer presence and patrols, helping at-risk youth, funding for safety programs, focus on traffic safety, and improving staffing and services. Next slide. And finally, within our performance, CPS continues to advance its performance goals through strategic partners, I'm sorry, strategic planning, project oversight, and resource management. The Professional Standards section is working with the Police Review Commission liaison to create a transition plan. While G7 preparations have affected some timelines, project priorities are regularly reviewed to minimize delays. Key initiatives such as the Sentry System remain on track for year-end implementation. Updates to the CAD project timelines are forthcoming. And finally, capital expenditures are being closely monitored with G7-related costs being tracked separately. And that's it for the presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Manager Hamilton Henry and Business Strategist Jimenez. Are there any questions? Gosh, you guys are so good today. No one's asking any questions. Awesome. Okay. Okay, thank, oh, there is one. Sorry, spoke too soon. You're still rocking it, though. Commissioner Nice and Jordan.
I just think these individuals deserve some question because they prepare so much. So in regards to your people, so significant strides, you're reporting significant strides or being on track, and yet we still have significant issues in terms of the number of police officers off. And so can you just highlight a few of the areas that you're really working hard to get some of those police officers back on patrol?
Hello. So I'm the Chief People Officer for the service, and I was actually thinking about this exact thing last night. And I'm going to say there's five streams of work that are integrated to address your exact question. One stream is we've just hired, and I met with her yesterday actually, a return-to-work facilitator who's going to run an actual return-to-work program. So she will be case-managing every single one of the two hundred-plus people returning to work, whether it's coming off of specialty unit back to patrol or coming from a medical parental or other leave, to ensure that we are properly assessing their needs, providing them with whatever upskilling, training, or certifications required, and then integrating them back into a squad or a team in a fulsome way. Second stream is we are improving our compliance requirements for the medical documentation that we're receiving. We have a contract physician working with CPS, and she's outstanding. And we're piloting some cases where it's not an independent medical examination, it's alternate to that, but it is making sure that we are more rigorous in terms of ensuring appropriate medical documentation. Number three, the abilities advisors, and we highlighted that group in an additional report. We are setting service delivery standards for those ability advisors in terms of connectivity with people who are off work, connectivity with service providers, that we're enhancing the services that are being provided by that team who are overworked. I'm saying, but we're working closely with that team. Number four, we're tightening up the placements policy. So actually ELT recently had a presentation, I think it was a week ago, on the placements policies at CPS. And what that means is if you're accommodated, how do we decide where you're going, in essence? And the lax, we've been somewhat lax in the past, and that's led to a perception that there's people who are accommodated maybe are getting privileged positions, or there's a lack of equity and fairness. So we've actually struck a subcommittee, which has people from across the service to land on placement principles, we're calling it, that we will universally apply across the service. And the fifth, last but not least, is what we're calling the Accommodations Project. And that's looking at all the roles in the service to see what does being a police officer mean and what jobs within the service require you to be a police officer versus a civilian. So that's the project I've mentioned a couple of times and will be reporting on in the fall.
Thanks. I just wanted to highlight this because I think that that's something the public needs to understand. Thanks.
Thank you for asking that. Commissioner Ogil.
Thank, thank you for the fulsome report, but I do have a, and I don't know what the answer is to the question, to this question. Like five of twenty-two progressing have no report. Like they're going to be annualized. Is there some way, and I'm not here to create more work, but is there some way we could maybe get a semi-annual look at some of these other pieces that are, because they're community-related and wellness? I'm just concerned that, I don't, I don't want the service or the people there to get kneecapped because they come up with data in January or February that we maybe could have had a look at earlier in the year.
Thank you, Commissioner. One of the measures we are taking is recognizing that the annual measures kind of limits our reporting and limits, once it's reported, it limits further report on that measure. We're trying to move away from those measures for 2026 and moving forward. And can, in October, in our October report, where available, provide some indication of where we are with those measures using proxy data? So that's something we're working on.
Commissioner Cornet.
Hi, thank you for the report, and I'm glad sort of trying to move away from annual reports is important. Although some of the things like the employee survey or annual survey, so that gives us good information. Anyhow, it's a bit, it's tough. And this, this second piece that I just wanted to sort of comment on and just say that I'm looking forward to it is there's a number of both training programs and all sorts of things that you offer in terms of providing awareness. So it's the trauma-informed, trauma-informed education outcomes. So there's a lot of training that's, that's offered. And I was really pleased to see down near the bottom that looking at what the measures could be in terms of effectiveness of those programs. And having done a lot of leadership and learning and stuff in my past life, it's hard. I know it's really difficult, but it's time and it's people coming off, you know, shift and all those sorts of things to do the training. So how do you, how do you look at that to see how effective that is? So I'm looking forward to seeing that whenever it comes back to us. So much appreciated. Thanks.
I'm seeing no other questions. So thank you again for the report and for all the work that you've put into it. We will now hear updates on local crime trends from the bureaus of investigative support and community policing. Commissioners will get a chance to ask a question about both reports together after the verbal presentations. Please go ahead.
Acting Chief Deputy Bell, did you want to start?
Good afternoon and thank you. Further to the report, we wanted to bring some attention to June 6th, which was the National Day Against Gun Violence. We did a public messaging on that, recognizing that day and recognizing that in 2023, that came forward. And we know that the impact it has to every member that's involved in the shooting or a family associated with that. As a result of that, the federal government actually put some grants together, and we applied for a grant, and we were successful in that application under the Guns and Gangs Violence Action Fund. And we created a Strategic Data Integration and Intelligence Unit. This is a single unit that all shooting events in Calgary Police, as well as sometimes assisting our partners, go through. And we get a strategic lens on that, and it shows the gaps in historical investigations. And what we're trying to do is operationalize that, those gaps. And so what we've noted in that, in creating the unit, is that there is people that fall between the gaps. So a lot of our offender management happens with people and intended targets, but there is roughly seventeen people so far since January that we've identified that did not have any offender management. And we're trying to get ahead of that and use it in a way that we're targeting those people so they don't continue committing the crimes. A further example to that is one youth who had a history of criminal activity that got involved in some shootings early on, and he'd fallen between the cracks in the sense that the violence was escalating. Since we've noted that, we've had forty-eight times where we've actually offender managed him since January, and we've had no infractions since that. And so the Strategic Data Integration Intelligence Unit was able to identify that, and we operationalized it with the Bureau of Community Policing, and we'll continue doing that with the seventeen other members that we, or seventeen other people that we've had happen or have fallen into that. Again, the data is more than just numbers, and behind each report, we recognize that people, the family and the community that are involved. And so we don't want to lose sight of why we're doing that. That also leads us into the International Day Against Drug Abuse and Illicit Trafficking. That is actually set for tomorrow, and you'll see a public release coming forward on that. In the report, you saw that in Calgary, the three predominant drugs that we are seeing are cocaine, methamphetamine, and fentanyl. And as a result, we are really trying to target the people that are making money off this and victimizing the community. That is our focus. Even as we speak, I received another briefing note from another file where we received, or we had great success on that. And so it is a big problem in Calgary because we are an affluent community. But we again don't lose sight on the fact that we want to educate, and we want to make sure that people understand, and we try to help people that have an addiction issue. And so with those interactions, we ensure that we are providing resources to them, and that is done in person. And there's steps along the way, even when they go to our rest processing section, where they're giving contacts to make sure that if there's an addiction issue, if there's a health issue, we're giving that in the same token that we would be looking at it from a criminal offense. The final thing that I just want to touch on, and I'm actually very pleased on this one, is it's to do with Not My City. So human trafficking is happening in and around Canada, North America, and Calgary. And we recently partnered with Not My City, which is led by Paul Brandt. And he is obviously an artist by trade, but this is an area that he has dug really deep into. In 2021, we had initially released human trafficking e-learning for the members of the Calgary Police Service. But we took this opportunity to partner with them and use their e-learning to refresh our members on that. And so just this week, actually, we released that e-learning to all members of the Calgary Police Service. We have actually made it now that if you are going to be working a pay duty at some major event, whether that is a stampede or something similar to that, that it is a requirement to do the pay duty. And so we're upskilling the officers in that and making sure that that information is accessible to them. Further to that, we provided basically a flow chart. So we've armed them with the information so that they can now watch for that and identify it. But we wanted to make sure that they knew what to do when they received that information or they recognized that. And so we've attached a link for the chart, and so that all that information gets, or funneled to the people that it needs to have happen. There's further work coming in that, but it is an area that is kind of underdeveloped at this point, and we have some big ambitions. That's everything from my side at this point. Thank you.
Afternoon. Can't wait. Afternoon, everyone. So I'll start with one of the things that just happened actually yesterday, and we're pleased to, we're pleased to announce that City Council passed an amendment to the Public Behavior Bylaw to include visible weapons or noxious substances. And so for us, for me, this is about a fourteen-year journey. So for us, this is pretty impactful because one of the things that we're able to do is proactively address perceptions of public safety. So as you know, in the criminal code, we certainly have lots of, lots of parts of the code that we can use, sections of the code we can use for weapons. But in this particular case, we don't necessarily have to prove intent. And so between us and bylaw, we do see this. We'll still lead with compassion. But this, this allows us another tier to deal with individuals that have visible weapons. You have my report, and I'll just highlight a couple of things. You've already heard about the victimization when it comes to replica guns. So I won't, I won't go into that any further. You'll also see in the report that I talk about repeat offenders. Again, that's not new, and I know it's not new to the commission, but it is frustrating. It's frustrating to our community. It's frustrating to our police officers. So it is something that we continue to work on as far as looking for advocates. So it is something that we continue to work on as far as looking for advocacy when it comes to bail reform. Yeah, you, you would have seen on there that we've seen an increase in, or on the residential side of break-in enters, we've seen a slight increase. And some of the, some of what the chief was talking about, those offenses came from some nighttime break-in enters that we were seeing. We have pushed out some, some warnings and media to our community to, to alert them to that. So especially when it was war about, people were leaving the screen doors open, screen door, of course, is, a screen is easily defeated. And we were seeing people break into homes to steal, to steal vehicles. We have, we have a group of investigators working on those right now. I know that we'll, we'll maybe come back and talk about it another meeting, but you'll see the report in there about Safer Calgary Initiative, where we used our partners in, with transit, public safety as well as bylaw officers and our CERT members to, to help with some of the safety initiatives in the core. And you'll see the after-action report from there. We put a lot of resources in there, but you'll, you'll, you'll see some of the survey results in there, which are quite interesting. And just to wrap up real quick, I just, I know it's been said by the chair and the chief, but I'd just like to reiterate just how proud we are and, and thank people for the work that was done during G7. And not just the, the work from the, from what people saw, but all the stuff they didn't see, all the things that were going on behind the scenes for, for many, many months before. And I think we'd be remiss not to thank the mutual aid partners from Vancouver and Edmonton, Satina, Vancouver, Winnipeg, that came here and policed alongside us to make sure our community was safe. So thank you. That's it.
Thank you both for those reports. We'll go to Commissioner Ogil because he's super eager to ask a question.
More make a comment. No, I do have a, a couple of things. I'm just thinking about this one individual who you had to interact with forty-eight times since January. That's twice a week. That's a lot of resources. And I don't know the solution. I just want to note that though, that's a lot of high-priced help to deal with an issue. The second though is a, this week, Counselor Winess and I had the opportunity to interact with Paul Brandt, who told us that of all the services around the globe, not just Canada, that he interacts with, that the Calgary Police Service is way ahead of Not in My City. So I want to compliment the service on that right from the horse's mouth, so to speak. Finally, SCSO Murphy, in her report, helped, I, I, I beat on this drum a lot about the stats on a per capita basis as the population of Calgary has grown by twenty-six percent in the last eight years. Be good to have some prorated number, data in here, Chief, about that on, because your stats are, the numbers are higher, but they're not. They're lower relative to the size of the city. So I didn't see that in some of the reporting. I think it would be additionally a good, we talked about this in our pre-meeting about data because of the size of the city. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Nice and Jordan.
Couple of questions. The graph that you gave on the types of drugs that are actually showing up in the city. I was astounded at the drop in cocaine. And overall, the drop in the numbers, given that that's one of the, open drug use is one of the big concerns of the city. So comments on that. And then the second part question. Nitazines are the new kid on the block from a drug use perspective and more potent perceived than fentanyl and some of the other drugs. So the question is, I didn't see an other category and I'm just wondering where we are with recognizing whether or not we've got some new kids on the block that we need to, as a city, be aware of, especially for our vulnerable population. Thanks.
Great questions. The first thing I do have to just make note that the dates on the report were inverted or reversed. The twenty, twenty twenty-five, I learned should actually be where the twenty twenty-four is. Yep. But the cocaine drop, I actually dug into that because I anticipated a question would come up about that. Last year in Major File, we had a significant drug seizure in the twenty twenty-four timeframe, which spiked it. And so we see roughly seventy-six kilograms, which obviously sent our numbers quite high. And so what you're seeing for the twenty-one, twenty twenty-five is actually more realistic of what we see year over year. So that is why you see a little bit of the jump in that timeframe. In relation to the different drugs, there is always, to your point and to your term, a new kid on the block, car fentanyl, things along those lines, they are always changing. And so we do see other drugs, but we were just looking at the significant seizures and the predominant ones that we see in and around Calgary. Yes, there's a whole bunch of other ones that do happen and we actually send them off to Health Canada and they're assessed. And we're actually working with a national fentanyl strategy to see, like, we're trying to identify common themes and things that are happening. So we are alive to it. Why there's no other is just because there's, it's tough to put everything into one category because there's so many subcategories of that. And so it would actually be a little bit misleading. And then if I could just offer comment back, it's total. You are right, forty-eight times is a lot of resources in saying that though, if a shooting happens and we look at it from an investigative standpoint and the resources that go in that are needed from the time the event happens to the end of the investigation. The proactive approach, not only to the safety for Calgarians, is beneficial. And so it's an offender management strategy in a sense, and not that they have a lot of downtime because our frontline members work incredibly hard and they don't have a lot of downtime, but they can roll up and do a check on a, on an address on a curfew and make that happen very quickly. And so you are right, your feedback is on point. But on the, the other side, it's that fine balance of let's prevent it from happening using the resources so that we, on the backend, we don't have to do that. So. And then for the Not My City, yeah, we are very proud. We actually are the first in North America, actually in the world, to actually adopt the e-learning from Not My City. And so I would say that we are for sure leading for police agencies across North America for sure.
Thanks for that.
Commissioner Hope.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you deputies for your report. This actually question will actually be for Deputy Chief O'Brien, particularly because you mentioned the safer operation. And, and it's obviously a theme that has, has come up before us because commission has been asked over and over again around chiefly perception being the rule of the day. And in light of that particular operation, and unfortunately I have to quote a line directly from their own report. It says, based on business and community survey, perceptions of safety were unchanged as a result of the sort of high-profile policing. So with that in mind, what new approaches, what new changes are going to be needed to drive down that perception?
Yeah, it's, it's disappointing to see that, but you know, it is not. And you saw in the report, the thousands of warrants that were executed, the, the multiple criminal charges. And you know, I don't think, I mean, we, we basically grabbed all of our redeployed, all of our community engagement response teams into the core to work during those two months and they continue to be down here. So when we go back to businesses, oh, and I should point out on top of that, thanks to Director Nun's shop, we were pushing out in that two months, fifty-plus social media posts with the work that was being done. So I would, I would start not to be flippant, but I'm open to suggestions on how we do that to start with. I do think that there are, you know, at that same time, we're talking about community courts and, and other initiatives that are down there. We, we obviously were very well coordinated with our bylaw partners or law enforcement partners. We, you know, we take a look at, I mean, I think there's a couple of different things. So I'll talk to you later in camera about a bit of a plan or a plan that we have in place. But one of the other things is as we, I just throw this out there, that as our patrol officers are short, so are our DSET or Beats and Bikes downtown, they're also short. And that, that certainly is an impact. The, I, again, we're at a little bit of a loss here. You may see downtown that on our patrol cars, we have a steady light that is on a blue and red light. So it's not necessarily flashing. But so when we have our police vehicles downtown parked in, in sometimes strategic places, that light is on to show the presence, even if they don't necessarily see the police officer. And that, it just seems like that hasn't made a significant difference. The, I know in DSET and our two downtown CERT teams, we have clinicians that are embedded with those teams. And the idea is not, is to try to do something a little bit different. Those clinicians help us navigate some of the systems that we, that we need navigating when it comes to dealing with, especially some of our homeless and, and mental health addicted individuals. So I, I really, we're at a bit of a loss. There are lots of resources and we'll talk later. There's resources that we're going to redeploy down there. Some people will see, some they won't see. But that perception of safety, when you think that we took teams from all over the city, which, which, and I, I just, you know, depending on where you live and where you work, that impacts you as well. Because we've taken teams that are dealing with vulnerable and we've put them into the core. And those businesses or those particular residents down there aren't seeing that increased presence. Honestly, I'm at a loss.
I appreciate that answer, Deputy Chief, because there isn't an answer and I think it speaks to how nebulous the idea of perception is. That if one person on a one visit doesn't see a police officer on the corner, that that can be problematic. So appreciate.
Commissioner Mallon.
Thank you, Chair. I have two questions, actually. I did spend five or six hours with CERT a couple of weeks ago. And you know, at first glance, we are really well-resourced on Eighth Avenue Mall, right? There was like, I don't know, six maybe officers, three cars with their lights on in a two-block radius. And I wondered if that kind of visibility was forcing some of the activity to new places, like off of Eighth Avenue and some of new people are now recognizing some of those problems. Is that a possibility?
First of all, I have to say thanks for noticing that, noticing the police down there. We need to get you on the survey. But, but the other, but yes, we, we are seeing displacement. There's no doubt about it. What we're trying to do is be nimble with our response to that. This is not new for us. And so in that report, you'll see some recommendations with regards to day spaces and places that people can go. As I'm sure you're aware, when you, when we tear up Olympic Plaza and we're doing all the work down there and some other areas that people perhaps used to hang out and now they're not, that also has impacted and we're seeing displacement. So we're having to be somewhat nimble in our response, especially with a CERT. And you may have heard this, but some of our CERT members who are very passionate about the work they do in their community, we've asked them to come downtown and, and really they're leaving their community that they're originally assigned to, to come downtown and work downtown, knowing full well that there's still issues in their own community that they want to go back to and help. So. But displacement, one hundred percent is taking place for sure.
My second question related to, someone made a suggestion that perhaps a walk-in counter for the police on Eighth Avenue might be of value. And it was related really to, in the five hours I was there, there was quite a few people who came up to the officers and to report some kind of crime against them. And how do I report it? And I think that they were being helped to do it online. And I, I just wondered with some of that population, someone suggested it, it's not my idea, but someone said, there's so many empty places now on Eighth Avenue Mall that the Sixth Avenue walk-in counter might not be as effective for people who feel they've been victimized and maybe don't feel as competent to use technology.
Yeah. And certainly when we did the, it may have been last month, but when we did a bit of a review of the Downtown Safety Hub where it is now, we certainly saw that we've increased some signage. We've, you know, we'll start to see some advertising on buses and, and transit and whatnot with where the new location is. There are multiple things that we're looking at and, and I, I certainly appreciate that people may see a vacant spot. It's quite a bit different for us to get that, as you know. But, but we're certainly looking for opportunities. This isn't, this didn't happen because of one event or one thing. And I don't see it getting fixed with just one thing happening for sure. And again, in camera, I can tell you a little bit more, some of the things we're looking at.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do my CERT right along the Saturday. So I'm excited to see the work that your teams are doing. I just had a question for Acting Deputy Chief Bell around offender management. I just want to make sure I understood correctly what you were saying. You said that you had seventeen individuals that you've now identified that need to go into this program. How do you identify the people that need to go or what's the process of folks going into offender management?
Really good question. So remember when I own offender management for the service in my division, in my proper job? And right now there's three streams in there. There's the poet team, the shop team and the high-up team. And then the auto theft team reports there, but they kind of go through the entire city. And so their mandates are pretty specific and they're siloed to what they're doing. And so what we noticed was a gap where if you were not part of organized crime and a gang member where you were being offender management and you weren't in a court, shop or high-up, that was the gap. And so these seventeen people have fallen into that little abyss. But it was never identified without us taking that data and actually dissecting it. And so that's the gap and that's what we've kind of done to resolve the gap. And so normally, historically, for the offender management, there's, for some, there's a point system. For these ones, because of the firearms, we felt, and there's a lot of people on charges in the community that never have offender management because there are one-off and whatnot. But what we've tried to identify because of the guns and the gangs component of it and the risk to the citizens of Calgary, we wanted to add a little emphasis to it. And that's the offender management piece that we're looking at. And then we're hoping to build out with the Bureau of Community Policing. And so there is more to come on that, but that's kind of the gap and the resolution at this point.
And so follow-up question, the gap, then I guess you figured out a way to make sure that the gap doesn't happen again?
Correct.
With the data. So you'll track it and then these folks will be entered into that program if needed.
Correct.
Okay.
And further to that with, with this unit, one of the things, and kind of to dovetail to the chief's message earlier about airsoft guns and replica guns, we're starting to look at that as well because it's, it's an area that hasn't really been tracked well for the service, but it has high impact. It takes a lot of our resources. And so how are we actually looking to that? Because there is a predictability factor with some of this as well.
Great. Thank you very much. Are there any other questions? Oh, Commissioner Hanson.
Mine's not really a question. It's just a real praise. I'm really proud of you guys and what you've done through G7. But you know, where my heart is with human trafficking and to see how fast that moved. We had a meeting, what, in April and it went forth from there. So I'm really, really have to say I'm really proud of it because it's something that has kind of been very under the radar. And now people will see it. I'm going to put it out to the commission for everybody else to take that training. It's free. But it is something that makes you notice it no matter where you are. So thank you CPS for doing that. Thank you, especially, I'm going to call you superintendent now, but, but for how fast you and a C4 on there, Deputy Chief, we're on, we're on that. It just, it has made a real difference. So thank you.
If I can just add to that, we're also pushing that out on social media. So it will become publicly available as well, that training.
Again, thank you very much for those reports. Oh, sorry. That's okay. Commissioner Winess.
I know we have a long meeting, so I'm trying to decide. Motorcycle safety and, and, and I know we did education on it. However, I think there's probably been more fatalities since what's in this report. I look at Stony Trail's been closed multiple times in the Northwest Quadrant. I think I'd honestly say part of it's due to the removal of photo radar. How can, and I know you guys are stretched thin. I've also seen you pulling people over. One time I drove from City Hall back into my ward and saw three people be pulled over in different segments along that trip. So good job for you on that. But yet we're still seeing Stony Trail get shut down. Is how can we get louder to the province for their decision-making on the, like, I could pull a picture from, I think, yesterday with the flipped over car. How can we get louder on this? Because the pressure on my community from the detours that end up from a highway through a suburban-designed road network is, is bad news. We got lots of semis. We already have a lot of gravel trucks coming through. So I, I like where we're going, but it's still with the pressure. So I like where we're going, but it's still with the pressure of growth on the city and the pressure on you guys. I feel like we're, I don't know, I don't have even the right analogy to to say how frustrating it is when Stony is always getting closed down.
You're not going to get any argument from us. So so yes, there have been unfortunately since this report that you have was drafted June 10th, maybe, there's been two more fatalities. So I think we're up to 12 now. And and several of those were motorcycles. So when you talk about Stony or any of the provincial highways, we continue to run into the exact same issue. We have asked, as you're aware, we've asked the sheriffs to come in and assist us with with traffic enforcement on Stony. It is absolutely ridiculous, the speeds that people are driving. And when you see somebody driving 180 on Stoney and then on top of that, they're impaired. It's it's a recipe for disaster. We know that sheriffs have have sheriff's branch have helped us, which is great. It's still a prohibition for photo radar on, as you know, on provincial highway and the connectors. I can tell you from, you know, some of the work that we're doing with the the province where we're putting together business cases on the province and we talked more in camera if you want on some of that and some of the data we're getting from the city to help build our business case. But Stoney right now, we don't have a solution other than our own officers going out to do enforcement on there, which they do. And they do at their peril, just as the sheriffs do, because it is dangerous, which is part of the reason, as I know this commission is aware. But it's part of the reason why we used photo radar on those roads. It was safer for for our members. So I any advocacy with the province, but I would say the challenge we have counselors that right now is a prohibition.
Yeah, okay, we'll talk more about it. And I think all of the concern I think council had as well as you guys going into it about officer safety was proven within what a week where an officer was struck. So we'll keep, we'll keep going on this. So thank you.
Commissioner Ogil.
Deputy O'Brien, I'm not going to wait to go in camera to talk about this. This this foot dragging by the province on the on the business exemptions, we got to get changed. I got that. So anybody who's listening that's a citizen of Calgary, get talking to your MLA. And we'll do what we can here. And I'm the provincial rep, okay, on the commission. But this is no good. Like, we got to, we got to put those radar sites back at work. Saving people's lives and quit not tipping cars over like I, I, I commend you for your patience, but we're going to get working harder at this. This isn't right. One more thing, are those deputies or sorry, the sheriffs, are they are they in use or is this, are they another thing that they're talking about helping you with? Are we getting the sheriffs in place?
Yeah, the sheriff's branch have been helping us are maybe three months now. I can't remember, three or four months. And then I just don't have the stats for this month, but they they send us their stats, their certain days. And they have certain shifts that they're working. And, you know, I know, I think I said this maybe last month, but and clearly I'm not on TikTok, but the the people on, you know, there's TikTok challenges. And one of them is is going to get people killed. And that is how fast can you drive around the ring road? And then, you know, so when we're seeing those things, we are investigating those. That is, that is a criminal offense, how they're driving. So all of these, so yes, the sheriffs are here, have been for a while. They've been doing awesome and getting us some really, really good dangerous people off the road.
If I could also offer it just from G seven, I was there for the summary with the sheriffs on the last night. And for a statistic, they, in that time period that they were in for G seven, conducted almost 2,000 traffic stops.
I'm glad you brought up the TikTok thing, because nor have I seen it, but I've heard about it. And that these challenges are out there and it's absolutely horrible. So I'm glad you brought that up. Commissioner Nice and Jordan, I think you have a motion.
Yeah, I've given it to Amber to type out and it basically is that we as a commission need to write a further letter. We've already done this once, but I think we just need to keep going on these letters of advocacy for resumption of photo radar. And I'm going to say that overall, I don't think it should be specific to Stony Trail or anywhere. This is a recognized safety initiative throughout the world. They're using it. I spent five weeks in New Zealand. They're using it there. And they could not believe when I spoke to some of the police officers that Canada would actually do something that ridiculous.
Okay, if you can bring the motion up. Oh, Commissioner Tenge, you had a question or a comment?
I can just wait after we pass them or or put the motion forward and.
Okay, thank you. So moved in second into direct see Calgary Police Commission to write another letter to the premier. I'll just put, yeah. Let's take out the another, another. You want it in there? Okay, okay, okay. Just being diplomatic, okay. Moved in second into direct CPC to write another letter of advocacy to the premier and ministries for resumption of photo radar. Can I get someone to move that? Commissioner Nice and Jordan, Commissioner Cornet. Okay, I'll go to Commissioner Tenge.
It would be great if, and I don't know if we include this in the motion or not, but to include actual data behind what we're saying. I I agree that we've talked about it, but it would be really nice to include some data in that letter of advocacy.
I agree. And I think if I'm correct, chief or deputy chiefs, I think we removed them in December. Is that correct? So there should be some data from December 1st to now. And I see that the data people nodding their heads back there. So we should be able to pull something, correct?
So I, we're working with the city engineers to get us some data. One of the things that we've been looking for, and if it's happened, it hasn't happened on the scale that maybe we thought, there is still muscle memory. So if you think about those sites going through, people are still lifting their foot off there. So there's still some muscle memory. So, you know, we don't want to wait for a fatal collision. But when we're, we're still working with the city engineers to get some of that data that we need.
Can I add in here? There, I've seen data already for the city and fire response, because we're usually first on scene for accidents. And so we can incorporate, I I've already seen that, because I've asked behind the scenes for this. And it, there's already a story being told with the limited data we have. So I'll talk to city.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Commissioner Cornet.
So with respect to the motion, I think it's really important to add a few words at the end. Resumption of photo radar so so as to increase safety, reduce speed, whatever. Because otherwise that motion is going to be public and people are going to say, oh, yeah, because we need the money. It's not about the money. It's about the safety and incidents. And so whatever words we can do to put in there, increase safety and reduce speed. Yeah.
Very good additions. Sorry, go ahead, take it, Commissioner.
Can we also, instead of resumption of photo radar, rather exemptions for as that's what we're really waiting for is is what are the the processes in order for us to get these set up? Is that correct?
Sorry, that's not the intent of the motion. I think that it should be resumed in whatever place was deemed important before, because we did it for safety reasons. So why would we specifically only go for exemptions?
I'm I'm good with that. I just know we're still waiting for the process in order for us to get one going. But I I just think we would have more strength in asking for that than saying, hey, are you guys going to reverse everything you said? Unless we have really strong data to back it. And to be clear, I agree with with Commissioner Ogil on this, but regardless.
I think Commissioner Tenge, if I'm, if I'm looking at the commissioners correctly, I think there is some data that we can use. I think that there will be some more information in camera about the exemption, so we can wait to talk about that. I also think regarding this, I would also support the resumption of it, just because of the fact that I think Calgary and Edmonton are very different than other areas in the province as well. So I think we need to add some information about being in a big city also and what's happening with the removal. Commissioner Hope.
Thank you, Chair. And I would just add to what Commissioner Tang and Commissioner Mason Jordan said is that should see that this letter is is part of our advocacy efforts. So are they going to ultimately turn it around just based on the letter? No. It's going to be the series of ongoing political advocacy that we make. So we can strengthen our case and we'll be strengthening the data that we're able to deliver on each of those occasions.
Agree. Is are there, is there any other comments regarding the motion? Okay. Oh, yes. Go ahead, please.
Can we just make sure to put a due date on that? And then also, did you want me to include advocacy with data from the city and service? Or do you want me to just keep give it as data?
Yeah, we'll get data wherever we can get it. Sure. What do we want to look at? Because the staff needs to pull this together. Do we want to say by July 15? I'm speaking a date. Does that work?
Yes, and the city have data provided for the commission by that date.
Commissioner Yness. Okay, so the chief is saying that there is stuff there. So why don't we, we can always amend it a little bit, but why don't we put by July 15? So that should give us enough time to pull some data and together let get the letter written. Okay, so. Okay, so if I could get everyone, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Okay, great. Motion passed. And Commissioner Wong has another motion for this section. We're done with this motion. We're good. Sure, Commissioner Wong, why don't you speak to what you've brought forward?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Well, Amber's typing it up. In verbal. The request is that the commission asked the city Calgary to basically install and monitor at the previous green light speed on green locations to report back over the next 30 days, what the what the actual episodes are, like how many, how many instances of speed on green are you seeing? What, you know, what is the speeds are? So so in other words, we used to be able to track it. We wanted to track and report it, report it back to you so that you can then use that information for exemptions. So I don't know if you do that today. Do you get that today? So when, in other words, when you shut them, shut down in December, are you getting your indication anymore? If not, would it help the city to get to turn it on? So you get some reporting to do your business case?
Yeah, we're, we're, we're not, we did turn it off, so we're not getting that information. And and we had some legal advice that that they can't be turned on, even if we're not giving some. And so so to your point, to try to track that speeding, that there would still be some challenges with that.
Just for you for reporting purposes?
Correct. Yep.
You wouldn't be allowed to use it?
Yes.
So I think, I think what I'll ask is, I think we'll leave this motion for now. I think there's some more information coming in camera, if I'm correct. So Commissioner Wong, if you're okay, let's take this one into the next section. Okay, thank you for pulling it together, though. Okay, thank you for those reports and for all the commissioners for your comments. Very important. So if I could get someone to move in second to receive the reports for information. Commissioner Hanson and Commissioner Hope, all those in favor? Great, thank you very much. Moving on, the next item on our agenda is the opportunity for commissioners who represent our commission on various external associations and committees to share any information. There are no presentation, but do commissioners have any questions for any of the representatives or the reports posted? Okay, fantastic. Could I get someone to move in second to accept these? Commissioner Mallon, Commissioner Ogil, all those in favor? Great, thank you. Our final presentation today is being presented by Illumina Research Partners. A firm that conducted public perception research on behalf of the Calgary Police Commission. This research is conducted annually to learn how Calgarians perceive their safety. How satisfied they are with the quality of policing in Calgary and what the community sees as key policing opportunities. So we're just going to go ahead and get Illumina set up. So we'll just take a couple of minutes and then we'll go into their presentation. Thank you. Wonderful. Illumina, thank you for being here. Would you prefer to go up to the podium to do your presentation? That would be great. And then I'll let you introduce yourselves. Thank you.
It is an absolute delight to be here today in person, after a number of years of being online. So it's wonderful to see all of you and new and people that we've worked with before. I'm Yvonne Bowers. I'm president and CEO of Illumina Research. With me today is Angela Storjik, Vice President. She is going to be presenting the highlights of this year's community perceptions research. Couple of things I'd like to say before we start. One, Canadian, Illumina is a Canadian Research Insights Council accredited member. Why does that matter? In today's world, that matters. What that means is that we're committed to the highest quality standards globally and the highest ethics globally. That's important. Fun fact, we have been conducting this research since 2008, with the exception of one year. Today, I'd like to show you what we are going to be focusing on today, hoping that slides will advance. And maybe I can get some support here in terms of advancing the slides. Does somebody mind to come up and is it working? I just, we don't have the full slide view.
Amber will be able to do that for you. So she's bringing it up. And then when you want to advance, just tell her to advance and she'll do it. Perfect. Thank you.
So Amber, if you could go to page four. All right. And is that possible to get that to enable editing and just to get that on a slideshow? View? Yeah, okay. Okay, no problem. If you hit four and enter, awesome. Okay. So why was this research done in 2025? This is about exploring the views of Calgarians to inform the 2027 to 2030 policing plan and budget. To do that, we explored four topics. Safety and crime, service delivery, crime prevention and community programs and police funding and resource allocation. And with that, I'm going to pass over to Angela to talk about the methodology and highlights on those topics.
Good evening, everyone. It works. Perfect. The results we are presenting today come from a quantitative 14 minute online survey from March 31st through April 28, 2025. The four week data collection window is used to help minimize the impact of point in time events on survey results. A total of 801 Calgarians participated, representing the Calgary population by age, gender and police district. The diversity of cultural groups who live in Calgary was also captured. The online survey included both quantitative rating and ranking questions along with six open ended questions that allowed Calgarians to express their perspectives in their own words. And you can see those questions there. in their own words, and you can see those questions there on the right-hand side of that slide. So what we're going to do now is we're going to jump in and walk through the highlights for the 2025 Community Perception Survey. There are five key insights that we would like you to take away from this research. First, Calgarians view Calgary as a safe place to live. That said, many believe crime and social disorder are rising. The policing priorities that matter most to Calgarians are rapid emergency response, investigations into serious crime, and being visible in communities. There is strong support for programs to prevent crime by supporting vulnerable people, victims, and youth. And looking at funding preferences, 61% of respondents support increased funding for police services over the next five years. But most want existing resources allocated, reallocated first before considering raising property taxes. That said, most Calgarians are willing to pay a property tax increase to fund police services if it leads to clear, measurable improvements in safety and service. So we're going to start with looking at safety and crime. 80% of Calgarians view Calgary as safe, but social disorder and crime are perceived to be increasing. We asked Calgarians if they feel social disorder and crime in Calgary are decreasing, staying the same, or increasing, and 57% perceive that both social disorder and crime are rising. This is attributed to visible social issues like homelessness, drug use, and mental health disturbances in both public places and on transit, as well as more perceived more frequent incidents of theft, vandalism, and/or violence. Only about 1 in 10 Calgarians felt social disorder and crime are decreasing, primarily citing things like police enforcement or initiatives, changes in citizen behavior, or media reports as the reasons that they believe that. This slide and the next slide shows the voice of Calgarians, what they said in their own words about why they feel social disorder and crime are increasing in Calgary. "I see individuals wandering drunk or high in my community and around the city. I'm seeing more and more homeless people or people out panhandling, much more often now than I ever did as a child." Another Calgarian says, "I hear more police sirens late at night, see more reports of murders and sexual assaults, and more people talking about theft and having to take more precautions than they did 20 to 30 years ago." Calgarians connect homelessness, drug use, and mental illness to safety risks, public disorder, and crime. So let's look at the data behind that statement on the right. We asked Calgarians what safety or crime issues concern them the most over the next five years. They ranked their top five concerns from highest to lowest from among a list of 17 safety and crime issues. The top five safety and crime concerns are listed on the screen. Homelessness, drug use, transit safety, person crime, and mental health crises or disturbances. We also asked Calgarians to share the reasons for their top selected safety or crime concern over the next five years. The "why" on the right-hand side is a synopsis of their responses. Homelessness, drug use, and mental health disturbances are social issues which are often felt to be interconnected and linked to safety risks, public disorder, and crime. Many feel these social issues are driven by factors like economic hardship, lack of affordable housing, and limited access to supports. Transit safety is another top safety concern because it is perceived to be unsafe, especially at night. Respondents mention concerns about disturbances, drug use, assaults, as well as a visible lack of security at stations and on transit. Calgarians who selected person crime as a top priority perceive that person crime is rising in Calgary. They fear for their personal safety and that of the safety of their family, especially women, seniors, and children. This is the voice of a Calgarian connecting homelessness and addiction directly to rising crime, she says. People who are experiencing homelessness are also turning to drugs and alcohol as coping mechanisms, and in turn, crime becomes an inevitability to support addiction created by poor conditions. There we go. So now we're going to move on to service delivery. Top priorities reflect public demand for urgent response, serious crime investigation, and visible policing. Calgarians were provided with a list of 13 priorities and asked to rank their top five priorities for CPS service delivery over the next five years, from the highest to lowest priority. And as shown on the slide, these are the priorities that were identified. Emergency response to crimes in progress when someone is in danger, investigations into violent crimes, proactive patrols in areas experiencing crime or social disorder, specialized investigations into crime issues like cybercrime or organized crime or drug trafficking, and emergency response to a property crime in progress. We then asked Calgarians to share in their own words what makes them feel their top-ranked priority should be a high priority for CPS service delivery over the next five years. And the "why," again on the right-hand side, is a synopsis of their responses for each priority. And in summary, what was said was that Calgarians feel that these are high priorities for CPS service delivery in order to deter crime, protect their safety, and prevent escalation and harm. The next three slides that we're going to look at are the share the voice of Calgarians on why they feel these services are a high priority for CPS over the next five years. This first this first voice of a Calgarian, this person shares why they think investigations into violent crimes are a priority. These are volatile, dynamic situations where professional assistance is required. Citizens do not have the expertise to preserve evidence, search for clues, and apprehend suspects. Another Calgarian describes why proactive patrols are a top service priority for her. If there's constant patrol, there's less likely to be a crime. And here, a Calgarian describes the impact of timely response. More people allocated to answer calls on time. Timely response prevents crime and also serves as a deterrent to crime. Our third topic is crime prevention and community programs. Calgarians prioritize crime prevention and community programs that support vulnerable persons, victims, and youth. We asked Calgarians which three community programs and crime prevention programs provided by CPS should be a priority over the next five years. Out of 11 potential options, citizens chose four priorities over the next five years. Programs for vulnerable persons, victim support services, youth programs, crime prevention, education. Now we're going to look at the last topic on police funding and resource allocation. Most Calgarians perceive current police funding as either insufficient or adequate. We asked Calgarians if they feel current funding for police services in Calgary is not enough, the right amount, or too much. 44% of Calgarians perceive current police funding as not enough, while 33% think the current level of funding is about right. Now what we're going to look at on this slide is that perceptions of future funding of police services over the next five years. The majority of Calgarians support increased funding for more officers to enhance public safety, respond to population growth, and address crime. We asked Calgarians if they feel funding for police services in Calgary should decrease, remain the same, or increase over the next five years. And 61% felt the funding for police services should increase. The primary reasons mentioned are the need for more officers, improved public safety, keeping pace with population growth, and to address crime issues. This is the voice of a Calgarian sharing why she feels police funding should increase over the next five years. She says, "As our city grows, we need to have the appropriate number of officers and services to provide safety for all citizens. When there is a visible presence, then crime is less. Show the citizens that the police care about our safety." Almost half of Calgarians are willing to pay higher property taxes to support police services. Looking at the graph on the right, we asked Calgarians how willing they would be to pay higher property taxes to support police services in Calgary over the next five years. And almost half, 45%, indicated they are very or somewhat willing to support to pay more in property taxes to support police services. When asked directly, 82% of Calgarians are willing to pay a property tax increase. Looking at the graph on the right, we asked Calgarians what level of tax increase they would be willing to pay to support police services in Calgary over the next five years. They were provided with the dollar amounts that you see on the screen, ranging from $0 all the way up to more than $100. 82% of Calgarians are willing to pay more in property taxes to support police services over the next five years, with the majority, 62%, indicating they're willing to pay up to $50 more per year. All respondents in the survey had the option to select $0. 18% indicated that they are not willing to pay any additional dollars in property taxes. So you're all probably wondering why the percentage of people willing to pay more in property taxes is higher on this slide than it was on the prior slide. So I'm going to go back the slide here if I do this right. Okay, so let's look at this graph again. And what we can see on this graph is that 30% indicated neutral when they answered the question about their willingness to pay higher property taxes. We also see that 11% indicated somewhat willing and 14% indicated very unwilling. The vast majority of those that indicated very unwilling selected zero. So for the level of tax increase that they would be willing to pay. However, when we looked at the responses to all the other categories like somewhat unwilling and neutral, those respondents selected a dollar amount, the vast majority of them, not all. The vast majority selected a dollar amount that you see on this page. So that's why the level of the number or percentage of people who are willing to pay more increased on this slide. In summary, when asked directly, 82% of Calgarians are willing to pay a property tax increase. However, budget reallocations are preferred over raising property taxes. So looking at the graph on the right, we asked Calgarians which of the following options they prefer to fund police services in Calgary over the next five years. 66% prefer reallocating existing funds over increasing property taxes, whether that is reallocating within the broader City of Calgary budget or within the CPS budget. This speaks to a public desire for fiscal responsibility and prudence before asking the public to pay more. If funding increases, Calgarians expect to return faster response, reduced crime and social disorder, and more visible policing. So let's look at the data on the right. We asked Calgarians the question. If a tax increase was implemented, which of 11 police services would they prioritize for additional resources? They ranked their top three services for additional resources from highest to lowest priority. And what you see on screen were the top priorities. So better address violent crime, reduce response times to emergency calls, improve crime prevention and community outreach programs, increase proactive patrols, improve safety on transit, and better address disorder. We then asked Calgarians to tell us in their own words how enhancing the funding for their top priority would specifically impact them or the city of Calgary as a whole. The "why" on the right-hand side is a synopsis of the responses for each category. But in summary, Calgarians feel that faster response, reduced crime and disorder, and more visible policing will deter or reduce crime, improve safety, and improve quality of life. So on this last slide is a quote from a Calgarian. And before I read that, we heard throughout this study from Calgarians that social issues like homelessness, drug use, and mental health crises are top safety concerns. This is a voice of a Calgarian on the benefits of improving funding for crime prevention and community outreach programming or programs if a tax increase was implemented. And what he says is this. "Enhancing funding for these programs would help reduce crime, support vulnerable youth, and build trust between communities and law enforcement, making Calgary safer and more connected for everyone." Chair Siddiqui, this concludes our presentation for today.
Thank you to both of you, and thank you for being here in person. It is nice to see you face to face. Commissioners, questions? Commissioner Ditterat?
Yeah, sorry, thank you for the presentation. So I was a little bit behind, so maybe I missed something. With the, I think this is for perception. And one reason, any reason why we didn't break it down to a kind of maybe ethnicity instead of just only the age and gender for the questions? Oh, okay.
Is it, yeah. It is broken down, correct, by ethnicity? Okay, that's, yeah, it's just further down, I think, in the appendices, correct? Okay, perfect. Any other questions? This is our only opportunity. They're not, they won't be in camera with us. Commissioner Nice and Jordan?
I am I'm sure I'm not the only one in the room, but increasingly frustrated with the same old, same old. We're still, although it looks like we're doing a little bit better on the perception of safety for Calgarians. I'm just wondering if there is any information you have. So you have the 80, the 801. But what about the ones that turned you down? What about the perception of the people that refused to give you the information? And how do they differ from that 801 that you have this information from? And I think it's probably more also the ability to access those individuals, the vulnerable populations, the one that we're concerned about in terms of needing additional support. So comments on that?
Yeah, so the eight, it was an online survey. The eight hundred and one Calgarians who responded to the survey, all responses were included in this study. So everyone who responded was included. We didn't exclude anybody. For the people who chose not to participate in the survey, unfortunately, we don't know the responses to their, but how they would have responded to the study. So we don't know how many, we also don't know how many would have been vulnerable populations. What we do know is that thirty-nine percent of individuals who participated in this study identified as equity seeking.
Commissioner Tenge.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for your presentation. Just a really quick question. You have quite a few quotes in here and I'm just curious how you decide which quotes and how many quotes you got in total of the eight hundred and one individuals? Yeah.
Of the eight hundred and one, the vast majority provided some sort of response to every open-ended question we ask. Some citizens provide more in-depth information than others. That said, when we choose quotes for a report, we try to cover a theme. So we don't just choose a one-off, we choose a quote that is a theme of among the comments received from citizens. So it will be reflective of what people are saying.
Thank you. I think one of the things, I mean, there's a lot of interesting things in here, but one of the things that I noted was that four out of five of the serious concerns that the community have really don't pertain to the police directly. And I understand that there's sort of that indirect. So I guess my question is for Commissioner Yness and Commissioner Wong in terms of how does this information get shared with the city? So that you're looking at these pieces as well, while the service is looking at these pieces also?
Some of this is redundant for the citizen satisfaction survey we get. I think I'm sitting here looking at it, yet I find with both surveys, they're not really level setting what investments currently been done or where we've, what programs are in place. Like, everyone wants us to throw money at the problem and and yet I'm looking at the KPIs that I would pull from this and the police can't solve it. They've arrested, like, we have a repeat offender. So someone expects that they're going to pay fifty dollars more in property tax and put pressure on the police and the police are like, well, we've arrested the guy. We just arrested him two days ago and then we're arresting him again. Like, your fifty dollars is, we're doing our end of the bargain. It's the lawyers and the judges and that they need to start stepping up. And so we can share this with council, but I can guarantee you it's, they're going to have more questions about type of questions you ask, what the controls the police have in place to actually meet the citizens' expectation. I know come tax time, what kind of emails our offices are getting. And if I were to put these responses, say, well, you guys told us to do this, the angry email and potential death threat I would get back is not something I'd want to engage in. So, yeah, I'll stop there for my, Terry can take over.
Thank you. Similar to Counselor Winess, Commissioner Winess, on slide number eight, if you can go to slide eight, if you don't mind. Slide eight is a summary of your presentation. Safety perceptions, placing priorities, prevention programs. And then the next two are monetary funding, you know, funding preferences and one is pay. The connection between the first three and then last two, I can't, honestly, I can't draw the connection between them directly, indirectly, because one says there's indirect. There's indirect associations to things that CPS does versus, you know, mental health, social services, Albert Health, you know, that sort of thing. So I'd be careful connecting the first three to the last two. And counselors are going to do the same thing and other prospective election candidates would do the same thing as well. So I would be asking a little more in-depth drilling into the data more for the appropriate correlations of who said what tied to dollars. You know, being the downtown counselor as an example, I'm going to say, yes, soon I see, you know, my constituency, a lot of things you see here. But if I were to go to, you know, Ward twelve down deep southeast, are they seeing the same correlation? And therefore, when you ask the people deep to southeast as to, you know, funding, and I picked southeast very particularly because it's a high conservative area, they don't want to pay taxes, right? As opposed to downtown being a little more liberal and social, you know, wanting to see addressing the social disorder, mental health, drug addiction, and a little more compassionate about spending money. So I'd be very careful connecting the first three to the last two is my response.
Thank you. Commissioner Yness, I know you have some questions.
I just want to confirm, you said this was online only, correct? Okay, so how come we didn't use other forms to connect with people, especially when you're drawing the conclusions you are? We have seniors that don't, aren't tech savvy and they're a demographic that own properties and are feeling unsafe in our community. In person, like, why not? We didn't pay them, but I want, I want to be make, like, it's that challenge of when you're drawing your conclusions like this and you're only doing online, your demographic of who's engaging and we've asked the question about who, why didn't people fill it out? Like, that's part of it. They don't feel comfortable. So what conclusions are you gathering with, with using only online?
For the online survey, we set very, we set sampling quotas to ensure we got representation across gender, age and police district. In online surveys today, if you do not set quotas, you actually get older people, sixty-five plus, who complete the survey.
How do you determine this is also not an AI bot? Because you're using AI bots and how do you rule that?
So we work with CRIK accredited sample provider. That sample provider has strict quality control measures in place to ensure that we're getting quality data. And so they use things like fraud protection, they have copy and paste protection, they have tools that they use, it's called like research defender. They have all of these measures in place to make sure that we are not getting bots. We are getting true respondents who have signed up to, you know, participate in these surveys. We're not getting fraud. So those are, there's a lot of techniques that are underneath and that is actually outlined in the methodology section of the report for your reference.
The question you're bringing up is absolutely, thank you, thank you. The question you're bringing up is absolutely critical. And I cannot over emphasize how much care is taken when we do this research because we look at this as being some of the most important research that we do. This is about safety. This matters. And a couple of things. Everything, I guess I'm confirming what Angela said. Your comment about AI bots has been an obsession for CRIK accredited agencies and the whole industry for about the last, well, since it became really a thing with the advent of AI. Prior to that, we were investing a lot of time and effort to ensure that everything was correct. There was no AI bots and I can say thankfully, we now have providers that are also CRIK accredited that have technology that prevents that. So the questions you're asking, I really appreciate and they are relevant. The other thing I'd like to say is that the quotas that are quotas really matter on any kind of research. You don't just randomly ask anybody. You have to make sure you've got good representation of ethnicities, of age, of district, of gender. And that was all done, it's very aligned to the twenty-twenty-one census. And to the point about equity seeking, we were pleased to see that thirty-nine percent of people in this survey identified as equity seeking. So it matters. We have to be able to trust this. And I'm confident that we can.
So I'm still challenged with AI because even universities right now are struggling where university students are writing a paper with AI, then running it through the system and say, how do I beat the AI that the prof is using? And we've pretty much come to the conclusion that you can write an AI paper and your prof still won't know. So how does the industry have that assurance when the universities right now can't even guard against it?
Yeah, research agencies around the world are battling this. And because this was an online survey using an online general population sample, there are certain providers that offer very, very rigorous protection and technology to be able to address this. So we are using that protection, plus we are using our own checking. And so things have come a long way. Two years ago, I wouldn't, there's been a lot of progress in preventing that fraud within research over the last two years, tremendous progress. But it's a very real thing and it's something, it's something that CRIK accredited agencies are all over.
Thank you. I have some other questions, but that's more like I know some of the background with the, how we came with the questions asked. And I'm always hesitant on surveys because the question you ask kind of draws to conclusions to get a report that I kind of have before me. But thank you for your work on this and I'm.
Yeah, because that also is something that is really critical. We took a lot of care and especially with this type of topic, it can be, it could be very biased. You could lead the witness. And I can tell you there was substantial work that was done to ensure that every question was unbiased, even the order and flow, that really matters. So apologies, everybody. You're talking about my obsessions here. So it's really hard, it, you know, this matters.
Yeah, sorry, I put the mic down, but your answer brought it back up. Is, being a counselor, we've invested in creating better partnerships with CPS and our transit officers and that's a lot of money. And yet it's not really level set. And I know from connecting with my community, they don't even realize that investments occurred. So I think a lot of, so when I look at the questions, I feel like they're devoid of the reality of how many millions of dollars are going into it. And so to see this report where you're telling me to spend more as a city counselor with, where I know the system and the challenges my officers are going through, I am putting them in a crosshairs of a public relations nightmare. And that's not fair to them because they're showing up every day. They're arresting people. It's the system's broken. And I don't see a question that really connects to the person that's filling this form out that shows how broken the system currently is today. And again, commission and our question processes will work on that behind the scenes. But, and again, I could probably rant back and forth between you right now, but I'll stop because I'm challenged by a missed opportunity to really engage and find solutions and advocate to get citizens who complete this to understand that it's all orders of government. They need to put pressure on and to continue to, yeah, we're missing a large part of the puzzle with the questions that were asked and I'll stop there.
Thanks. I think I do want to clarify that commission actually approved these questions. So I just want to make sure that everyone knows that, that we pick the questions. We reviewed them, we approved them. And I also want to say that we also approved the online part of the survey as well. So I just want to make that clear. I will say that throughout the years, we have done different types of questions and surveys, depending on what was happening in the community and what we wanted to know. So there is an opportunity. For this one, it was really around the fact too that we're heading into the next budget cycle. We wanted to get a little bit more information on that. So those, a couple of those questions were added. But in the future, there is an opportunity to add some more awareness and add things around transit and other pieces. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood that it did come from us. So Commissioner Ogul? Oh, Commissioner Wong.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you again for the presentation results. One of the questions I was going to ask, as much as we had the questions preset and therefore surveyed, the responses, were the responses based on a checklist of responses? Like, in other words, so did we give them for a question, ten responses of that? So many times when you do situations like that, there's always that, I can't find a tenth, you have one under ten. Did we capture other comments and are they summarized here?
Yeah, so the actual questions we asked are in the back of the report. So you can see all of the questions with the associated answer responses. Sorry, now it's escaped me what your question was.
Yeah, there were, just to build on what Angela's saying. So this was a quantitative online survey. So most of the questions in the survey were rating questions where the responses were provided. People could rate or rank those questions. But I think what is really important is that there were six open-ended questions, as you could see in the presentation, where we were allowing Calgarians to say why. So we could hear the voice of Calgarians. It wasn't just answering the rating question and moving on. So mostly quantitative questions with the options provided. But in several places, allowing Calgarians to say in their own words. And there was very in-depth work that was done because we felt for this type of research, we really needed to hear the voice of Calgarians to explain why they were picking what they did.
Yeah, so the follow-up question to that is, in, you know, whether it's today or future surveying, would you be more receptive or is the survey industry more receptive to taking open-ended questions and using AI tools to pull out, to extract out there and quantify what the open-ended questions are? So in other words, as someone who writes a long paragraph, you say, here are the five themes out of that message. Next person, three themes, quantify the results. Can, is that something you'd be looking forward to doing?
Yes. So maybe Angela, do you want to take this one? Because we can provide some information on that.
So that's actually part of the, so part of the process that is used in research with open-ended responses is that you actually do go through all the responses, pull out the themes and code them. So you would see those numerical results in this report as the, under the reasons for each of the priorities and the detailed findings. It'll show you the percentage of people who said each of the different themes. So we actually do do that today. There are AI assisted. We also have assisted tools to help us do that. Pull out those themes and then they're AI assisted. They never are a hundred percent AI. It would take the human researchers to go through and make sure what has been done is correct and is accurate and reflects what was said in those open-ended comments. But yes, we do get those numerical themes are pulled out of the open-ended comments.
And you'll see in the detailed findings, which we didn't go through today, a level of detail on each of those open-ended questions by category. Because we use some AI assistance with humans, we are able to get much deeper in understanding the perspectives of Calgarians. So we were very excited about the ability to do that.
Commissioner Tenge.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to say that the survey matches my experiences, whether that means anything or not, but that's the whole point of doing the survey. And also realize that there's concerns maybe from the counselors. realize that there's concerns maybe from the counselors about money and spending and so forth, but you know, this is what we ask. This is the questions that we ask and I appreciate Illumina's professionalism and putting this together and their experience in doing this, you know, not their first time. So again, I would like to thank everyone for being involved in this. Thank all of those in the public who answered it. And and honestly, this is kind of what I expected to see and it's not all that surprising. And I think we've been talking about it from a commission level that our police have been underfunded for many, many, many years, and it looks like Calgarians agree with that. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Tenge. Commissioner Hope.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you both for the presentation and sitting on the bullseye and and taking the shots. So it's, it's, it's pretty hard and difficult, but I only have one question. It really is around the part of the priorities that this survey teased out. One was the investigation of serious crime. I think you allude to another part in the survey about people's desire to see violent crime addressed. I just wondered if you could tease out more of the sort of insights about what kind of crimes were did people have in mind when they were talking violent or serious? Because then the pivot in the survey seems to be most people's focus was around homelessness and drug disorder as if that was the serious crime. And I just want to kind of get under understanding of what people were really thinking when they had in mind. Particularly because you threw in a comment there from a sixty five year old man who said, I've heard a lot of murders have increased. But then the, 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 the survey that itself seems to focus more around the perception of what homelessness did or mental healthness seen on the street as being the most active issue of our community.
When we say serious crime and we were summarizing what was said in the survey, serious crime encompasses both violent crime and specialized crime issues like organized crime, gangs, human trafficking, drug trafficking, all of those are considered serious crimes in the eyes of the citizens. When we talk about violent crime, they're really talking about any crime that they feel is going to harm them. Right? Physically, right? Harm the person. So it can be an assault. It can be a murder. It can be a shooting. It can be any of those crimes. It can be abuse, sexual abuse, right? All of those crimes where they feel it's a harm against the person, those are the types of crimes they're talking about when they're talking about violent crime.
So I appreciate them just for the gain, greater clarity. If I paraphrase what it says, there was, there seems to be a perception that if, if there was a fear of what crime they obviously saw, they were, they were fearful of the cybercrime and everything else. But although if I, on this, most of those kind of happened elsewhere or unseen. So everybody kind of accepts they were serious, but really didn't affect them. But they wanted a lot more resources poured into those areas, but then at the same time, address the crimes that they could see, which weren't really crimes as you kind of alluded to, there were more social issues. How do we pass those, those two concerns?
When we looked at the results and we looked at, there's a lot of concern by citizens about social issues as we talked about in the survey. They really do link the, those social issues with crime and safety. Right? So there is a lot of concern that the homelessness, the drug use and addictions, the mental health disturbances, they feel those are safety risks as well. So it's, it's linked in their minds that these two things are linked together. And they would love to see, you know, some of these social issues addressed while at the same time keeping a tab on, you know, emergency response time, serious crime investigations. Citizens want those violent crimes and serious crimes dealt with so they don't cause harm in the future. Right? They don't want that person to be let go who just hurt somebody and then there's a risk that could hurt someone else. So those are the types of things that are in the mind, in the minds of citizens. They want a balance between the two.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I'll go to Commissioner Ogilvy and then I think in terms of tie, oh, we'll move on if that works unless someone has another pressing question. Commissioner Ogilvy?
Thank you, Chair. Great work first. Second, I'm thinking of the, the next turn of this will be qualitative. And I'm thinking of the percept, the perception that Calgarians have of policing, which is wrong in that crime is not increasing. May's total crime, two thousand twenty five eighty seven hundred and seventy five instances versus fourteen thousand one hundred and eighty six in twenty nineteen in an increasing population. So all I'm, I'm not a surveyor. I have no idea what you do. I just, I know you do it really well, but maybe in the, in the qualitative go forward, when you ask the, before you ask the question, could you maybe say, did you know that? Such that the perception of what the, what crime is in the, in, in its, as the Calgary Police Service has decreased crime with lower budgets. The, the person answering the question, and I, I liked your comment about leading the witness. I don't want to do that. But they certainly need to know what the, you know, the, what the playing field looks like. Notwithstanding, as Chair Siddiqui said, four of the five are societal issues. So it was, I'm just trying to see kind of where the puck's gonna be next time.
I think it's really important to note that these are the perceptions of Calgarians. And to your point, sometimes the perceptions don't match the reality. Sometimes the perceptions do match reality, but it's important to understand the voice of Calgarians. Regardless, sometimes the solution might be a communication solution. And that's, I think, what you're talking about. Other times it can be a strategic, a true solution that more resources or more focus truly does need to go to a particular area. But that's the nature of this type of perceptions research. And it's why it requires the voice of Calgarians as well as the knowledge behind what is actually happening, where does it align, where doesn't it? Thank you.
I'm sorry. I just, I just want to jump in one last little thing. Let's also not forget, Commissioner Ogilvy. Reporting crime is not easy to do in Calgary. So although our crime stats may look like they're not increasing, there's a lot of people that won't report a crime anymore because follow up doesn't occur because their minor crimes are not really fitting with the resources that CPS actually has to incorporate. Plus, actually reporting a crime is a very difficult process as well. So it's, it's again, we can look at quantitative and start questioning that, especially as the city grows, but we also know there's a frustration amongst the commu, community and that's showing up in this survey.
The, your point about citizens not reporting crime has absolutely, has absolutely been shown in prior research that we've done over the years. So that is based in an absolute fact and supported by research with Calgarians.
That is what we would see from people reporting and I appreciate that the data agrees.
So before we close this off, I think we would be interested in Chief McCullin, if the service has any comments regarding the survey. And I know that CSO Murphy, I think you had a question or a comment as well. So, Chair Catherine, do you want to go first?
It's more of a comment, but maybe just to test my assumptions and my takeaways from this. I think as we go into our four year planning cycle and the very name of the survey is a perception survey, right? So it's, it's assuming that it's not necessarily based in actual data, but the perceptions are equally as important. So I want to make sure that we deeply understand the feelings of Calgarians as it relates to safety as well as the data that we have as it relates to crime rates and our response in dealing with them. I, I actually take significant positive from this survey in the sense that when I read it, it's more about what makes people feel unsafe in terms of the social disorder and it, what I read into that is that they feel unsafe because a crime could occur. That those situations make people feel like they could be on the receiving end of a crime, not necessarily that they have been or they will, but that those circumstances make people feel unsafe. And the response around the resourcing and police is that we're hearing from Calgarians that police make people feel safe. So police presence, whether we, can we solve all of the social disorder issues? Absolutely not. But our presence makes people feel safe. And the positive part of that, I think, is that the opposite of that would be very bad. Where if the majority of Calgarians did not feel safer with police around, I think that would be the opposite of what we're actually looking to to achieve. So I guess my, my question is, do you think that's accurate based on what you're hearing? And do you think it's accurate to say that Calgarians feel that police are at least a critical part of the solution as it relates to addressing perceptions of safety and to addressing social disorder? Because I think there are lots, lots of dialogue about who should be part of that solution and what does that look like? And I see from this that police have a very critical ongoing role, both by virtue of our presence, but also by virtue of our partnerships and our kind of hands on involvement in addressing some of those issues that are making people feel unsafe.
I, I would agree with your comments. Citizens definitely feel much more safe if they feel the police are present. So they do trust the police and that police presence. The, they also are supportive of the, of the police taking that partnership role to help deal with social issues. So that definitely comes out as well. In the survey, you know, they, they talked about social issues, but they also talked about wanting those crime prevention and community programs.
And to add to that, it's not just this survey. So what you just said and Angela confirmed, this is over the long term. We've been doing this work annually since two thousand and eight with the exception of one year. So one of the things that we're looking at, even though there was a shift to online for this, is are the themes similar? Is there, are there differences? Why? So these, this is, this is consistent over the longer term. So we feel confident in those results.
Thank you. Chief McCullin, I'll give you the last word.
Oh, awesome. Thank you. I echo everything that the CUSO has said. This survey is always good to take away and look at it. And as we've heard today, there's, there's lots of positive and there's lots of takeaways for us. The one thing for sure, and it's been for years, is that perception is an issue in the city and probably across the country. And as we also talked about earlier, it's complex. And so we're doing lots of things with our partners. We're being more visible. We're looking at a service delivery modernization. We're looking at emergency response. We're adding, adding more subject matter experts to investigations. And so again, what is the answer? And I think if any police service had the answer across the country, we'd all be, we'd all be, we would all be doing the same thing. So it, it's good for us to take away. We get the perception of safety is impactful to individuals, even though it might not be criminal. But all the i- issues and incidents that we've heard about here today, we have to continue to work with our partners and figure out a way to, to get that perception better.
Thank you. Yvonne and Angela, thank you again. I appreciate it. I do want to make one comment that there were several members of the public who are raising their hands while you were presenting. Unfortunately, I just want those members of the public to know that we don't take questions during presentations. You do have to register to speak prior. So I apologize that we can't take your questions, but there's an opportunity to register and do that at our next meeting if they choose to do so. I will also say that both of you will be around for the media availability if media has any questions for you. So thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you. Just a quick question. This presentation report, is that available for public consumption or or is it? Okay, thank you.
It is out there for public consumption. Okay. I need to, if I can get someone to move in second to accept the community perceptions research. Thank you, Commissioner Cornet and Commissioner Y Ness, all those in favor. Fantastic. Thank you. That is the end of the reports and presentations for today. We will now invite public guests who registered to speak so, to speak, to do so. Our public participation process is designed to balance the desire to hear from the public with the need to keep meetings a reasonable length. Those of you who registered to provide a presentation will have four minutes to speak, followed by commissioners having an opportunity to ask brief clarifying questions. Those who register to ask a question will have two minutes to speak followed by, so sorry, followed by the service or commission to respond within two minutes. Please keep your comments to the topic you provided when registered. We also cannot discuss a complaint about any specific employee or interaction with the police. If you would like to discuss a public complaint against an officer or other employee, please contact our public complaint director or the Calgary Police Service Professional Standards Section so that it can be properly addressed. I would also like to thank everyone that took the time to send us written submissions prior to the meeting. They have been provided to everyone on commission as part of the meeting materials. And we appreciate you taking the time to write and share your insights. Finally, a reminder to members of the media that we will hear from the public first and we'll hold a media availability for you. Amber, if you can put through the first speaker, if I'm correct, we only have one registered. Okay, thank you.
I'm going to move Marianne over to speak.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Hello, I can hear you, but your volume is a bit low. If you can raise it or speak a little bit louder, please.
Is this better?
Much better. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for allowing me this and it was interesting. I have listened through the whole meeting and I really, really very much appreciated things like increased, you called it officer management and the participation of the police force with the not my city, two examples of working with citizens that are very meaningful. So it's good to hear that. I mainly want to ask questions about the cost of police helicopter service. So I have four questions about that. Is that all right?
If you can do it under a minute and a half, you can ask your four questions.
Okay, one, what is the purpose of using police helicopters? Two, are there public parameters for their use such as the elevation, following a schedule or use of flashlights? Third, what is the most recent budget item for policing? For this item of policing in absolute dollars and percentage of the total police budget, both those ways of showing the cost would be informative. And for what is the most recent cost of the service? The amount and calendar period. So that's it. And these questions I submitted by email.
Great, thank you. Chief McCullin, I'll hand it over to you.
Yep, thanks very much and thanks for your questions. So some of them, two out of the four, we might be able to answer today. We can get back to you with the other detailed information on the budget stuff, but I will turn it over to Deputy O'Brien to answer your first two questions.
Okay.
I think we're gonna, I think Deputy Bell and I are gonna tag team this a little bit, but as far as the purpose goes, one of the things that we've seen is that with the helicopter, the helicopter can actually travel from one part of the city to the next within fifteen minutes, which very clearly is, is difficult for any other resource to do. You know that traditionally the helicopter is first on scene of any call with the, usually about eighty percent of the time. So the helicopter is very, very specific to responding to calls. It, we often will, will hear about, you know, perhaps noise or whatnot, but the helicopter is responding to a call.
Hi, and this is Deputy Bell responding to the second part of the question regarding public parameters. The helicopter is registered as a commercial aircraft with the Transport Canada. And so as a result of that, they have to follow all guidelines related to aviation. And so the helicopter ironically doesn't decide what elevation it flies at. That's actually dictated to us by basically the control tower out of Calgary International Airport. So the elevation, they could come in one day at hypothetically three thousand feet above sea level, or they could jump it up to five thousand feet above sea level one day. So it really depends on what other air traffic is coming in and what area of the city, because it's broken down into basically. because it's broken down into basically different zones in the city. So I hope that helps answer a little bit. I don't want to take any more of your time on that.
Of course, not my time. You mean the whole meeting.
Thank you very much. I know you commented that you sent an email. And so if any of your questions haven't been answered, then we will respond through the email. But thank you, Marianne, for registering and speaking today.
Okay, thank you.
The public participation session brings us to the end of our agenda. So we'll now adjourn the public portion of this month's commission meeting. Thank you for everyone for coming. I hope you all have a great evening. Chief McCollin and I will move to the podium shortly, where we will be available to answer questions from the media. Everyone is welcome to stay and watch our media availability, but only recognized members of the media will be able to participate. For commissioners and members of the service participating in the in-camera portion of our meeting, we will take a break before continuing. Please keep this room quiet until the media availability is finished. And if you are joining remotely, please remember to rejoin us using the in-camera link. Thank you very much.
Is there any media that would like to ask questions? Oh, okay. Okay, our first speaker is going to be Karina from CBC.
Go ahead, Karina. Can you hear us?
Sorry, it took a while. Can you hear me?
Of course. Thank you.
Okay, sorry. Thank you about that. For the chief and the chair, just about community perceptions. I know there was a lot of good discussions about it, but if there's more to add, just about how some of these concerns are kind of out of police's control directly, I guess, how do you kind of navigate that knowledge with the fact that the public does see this as the police's responsibility?
Sure, I can go first. I think for us, the research plays a vital role in terms of our governance role. So really, it helps us evaluate how well the service is meeting its goals while ensuring that public safety strategies are informed by community voices. I think you heard a lot of comments around the fact that while these are perceptions, perceptions are very important, and we want to make sure that we're acknowledging those. So as we go forward, we do use the survey in terms of setting goals with the service, looking at the annual policing plan and our strategic work that we do from the commission point of view.
Thanks, Chair, and thanks, Karina, for your question. And so, as you may have heard me say just a few minutes ago, the perception is reality, and the chair has just said that as well. Perception is impactful. It doesn't matter if our crime rates are going down and things are better. And as we also know, and as we heard, not everybody reports crime. But it is super important to us, and it's important to us that even though it may not be our only responsibility, our key responsibility, it is a responsibility to play a part in that with all of our partners. And we've got many initiatives that we have on the go in order to try and impact that. And as I said earlier as well, every police service across the country, probably nationally and internationally, struggles with that. And it is important to us, and it is a priority for us to try and enhance and mitigate and make Calgarians feel safe and address that ongoing perception issue.
I'll just add one more thing. I think, sorry. I think we also recognize the growing concerns around homelessness, drug use, and the mental health crisis. And so these are not just policing issues. They're community issues that require a coordinated response. So there's work that the commission can do to help support that advocacy, to ensure that all partners are at the table with the service to look at this work.
Wonderful, thank you. And just another question about photo radar for the chief and or chair. Can you just walk us through maybe the motion to bring back photo radar advocating to the province to bring that back? And maybe respond to some potential comments that I suspect might say, "Well, CPS just wants to make money again."
Yeah, thanks for that question as well. And again, we have always said, "It's not about money. It is about public safety." You might have heard some of the incidents that I spoke about right at the beginning of commission tonight, and the vehicles that are speeding on our roadways and the impact, not only to the public, but to our members as well. So we are engaged with the GOA. We're engaged with many of our other traffic partners. We sit at a provincial traffic safety committee, and we have ongoing discussions about this. So we're at the table. It is a key topic for us, and it's a priority for us. And so what I would say is, stay tuned. We know that it is a major issue, and we're going to have some more answers here in the next couple of months.
And just from a commission point of view, our key priority is community safety. So we're always looking at areas that are rising to the top are our priorities. And we're seeing that already with the cameras not being there, that there are more accidents happening. We know that people are not following the rules, even though there might be some muscle memory, as one deputy chief alluded. But we want to make sure that we look at the areas and that we're providing the right advocacy, whether it's for this or any others, and also ensuring that we have the right, again, the partners at the table to advocate to.
Can I sneak in one more question?
Sure, if it's a quick one.
Yeah, just a super quick, and just about the ban on weapons. How do you think that might help with these kind of perceptions of public safety and just social disorder and crime?
I'm just going to turn this over to Deputy O'Brien, who's been involved in all of these conversations with city councils over the last couple of months and years, actually.
Yeah, thanks for the question. What it says is that when we're talking about visible displays of weapons, we know that they have the potential to cause fear. So even if somebody's not necessarily, we don't know what the intent is, or they're not using the weapon in a dangerous manner, the reality is that it does impact public perception of safety. And we have those types of calls where it's restrictive in what we can do as police officers. So somebody decides that they're going to do something with a large knife right outside a patio, but it's not a criminal. So, you know, sometimes that is a restriction for us. And so to be able to have, with city council's blessing, to be able to have a bylaw where we can actually do something about it, and we'll still be compassionate with the individual. But if the individual is causing that type of anxiety to our community, we now have a tool to deal with it.
Thank you.
Do you want to put through the next person, please?
Does any other member of the media would like to speak? Nathan, I'm going to put you through. Can you please identify which agency you're with?
Hey there, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great, yeah. Producer with Global News. My question is related to the complaint resolution timelines. You mentioned that a large majority of the complaints that are made have to do with the complainants or are resolved with the help of body cams. And I was wondering if in reviewing that, you're looking at the complainants' interpersonal reactions with officers. How are you reviewing that body cam footage without any bias in making your resolutions?
Catherine Murphy, in charge of the Professional Standards Section, is going to speak to that.
Thanks very much for the question. It's an excellent question. I think the value of body worn camera is that it is actually objective evidence. And we also have that evidence on multiple officers at a scene from multiple different angles. And we get a very clear view of what's going on. We don't jump to conclusions, though. So if we are very unsure after watching body worn camera, but any questions at all, we continue with the investigative process and continue to ask additional questions. We always collect the complainant's perspective. We always collect evidence from the complainant. And if necessary, we collect further evidence from the named officers as well. So while it's helping us speed up our resolution timelines, we do not use it as conclusive in any given case.
Can you put the next caller?
Do you have any follow-up questions? Anybody else? Would any other media outlet like to speak? No more questions.
Great, thank you.